Ladies and gentlemen, this is the Trenton City Council meeting of February first, twenty twenty-two. This is a conference session. If you please take the time to mute your microphones and remain muted throughout the meeting. We are going to have a busy meeting tonight, and we hope that you do not interrupt unless you are acknowledged by the council chair. Council chair will take time to acknowledge every speaker, and please do not speak without our acknowledgement. We will be starting shortly. If you're on a landline, please dial star nine to mute and unmute yourself. I'm sorry, star nine is to mute and raise your hand or unraise your hand, and star six is to mute and unmute yourself. If you were on a smart device, look for the little microphone or the little hand signals. Once again, please remain muted. If you unmute yourselves and continually interrupt the music, the meeting, we will have to mute your microphone. A lot of M words there, so I apologize. We will begin shortly. We thank you very much for attending tonight, and once the council president calls the meeting notes, we will start. Thank you. Mr. Michelle, have you joined the call yet, sir? Mr. Michelle, have you joined the call yet, sir?
I'm on.
Okay, I just wanted to be able to identify which phone line. Thank you, sir. Mr. Harrison, have you joined the shit, sir?
Where's the docket?
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Mr. Collin. Have you made the announcement to silence all cell phones and everything?
I have, ma'am.
Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This meeting is being called to order. Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to Public Laws nineteen seventy-five, chapter two thirty-one. This agenda is complete to the extent known and was sent to the Trenton Times, posted on the first floor bulletin board in the city hall, filed in the city clerk's office, and posted on the city of Trenton's website. Formal action will be taken. Mr. Collin, roll call, please.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Cole Wilson?
Present.
Mr. Harrison. Mr. Michelle.
Present.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Present.
Ms. Vaughn. Council President McBride.
Present.
City Clerk Matthew Collins, present. Mr. Koloji.
Present.
Mr. Koloji is present. As president, we have a quorum. There are four members of council present, members absent, one vacancy. Would you like me to call the directors?
Yes, please.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Cruz.
Present. Good evening, everyone.
Mr. Cherry.
I'm present. Good evening.
Evening. Mr. Liston.
Present.
Mr. Bridges.
Present.
Mr. Wilson.
Present.
Mr. Douglas.
Good evening, everyone. Present.
Mr. Daniels.
Present. Good evening.
Dr. Lopez.
Good evening. I'm present.
Mr. Rannitiri.
Present.
Ms. Richardson. Mr. Lavender.
Present. Good evening.
Good evening. Mr. Cruz is serving as the acting director of finance. Council President, will you do a quorum?
I have to unmute myself. I'm sorry. Already, Mr. Collin, the... I'm just looking at my... Looking at my docket.
I also did, uh, Council President, I did also want to inquire, is Mayor Garcia or present?
Good evening. Present.
Thank you, sir.
So, Mr. Uh... Yes, so, Mrs. Uh, Mr. Coll... Yeah, the, uh... Are we doing the housing and economic development presentation first?
Yes, ma'am. Well, ma'am, that's up to you. The docket, the agenda is, uh, that is on the agenda.
Hello, Mr. Collin. It's Robin Vaughn. I'm dialing in this evening.
Yes, ma'am. Let me just, uh, could you speak up so I could see what number you're dialing in from?
Yes, it's... Can you hear me now?
It's got your name. Now, it's got your name. I see where it is, ma'am. I'm marking you for the record as being present. Thank you, ma'am. We just called the roll. We just finished the roll.
Okay, so, Mr. Mr. Collin, I wanted to ask you one thing because I'm looking at the February the first, uh, docket for the, uh, the agenda for this evening, and I do see the presentation, but I didn't see the... I don't see the, um... I don't see the resolution up here.
Uh, the resolution is there. You are able to move it up to the floor, madam, at your discretion. You are the chair. If anybody objects, they would need to take a vote. Stop you from...
Yes.
Or, uh, the resolution is there. You are allowed to take official action at the meeting if you want to move that to the floor. I'm assuming you'd be twenty-two dash oh twenty-two, ma'am.
Okay, so, um, I would like to move that up to the top of the agenda and then do the presentation from the housing and economic development with Mr. Wilkinson. So, we'll first do the, um... Um, I would like to make a motion to move, uh, twenty-two... Oh, oh, twenty-two.
That's your meeting, ma'am, so I believe, uh, I believe, if you want to do it by vote, that's one thing, but you have the, I do believe you have the ability as chair to move it to the floor.
Right, I, I just put a motion on. I put a motion on the floor to move it. I mean, to, 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 uh, to, uh... And now I'm looking for a second.
Second.
The only, the only issue is, ma'am, we should do a nomination for the name and the position before it gets moved to the floor so that the resolution is complete. So, uh, that, that's, that's the only issue with moving it to the floor. If you move it to the floor now, but that actually inserts the name, move it back.
Okay, so, so...
Yeah, hold on, ma'am.
Somebody, someone needs to mute themselves. Someone's talking.
Yeah, no, I, I got them. Uh, so...
So, what is the procedure, sir?
Uh, there are a number of procedures. Somebody could nominate, somebody, somebody could second, and then that could go for a vote. That would be called by a roll call vote. Their name would be inserted into the resolution. Um, that's typically the form.
So, alrighty, thank you. So, I would like to make the nomination.
But the resolution is already on there. We're just moving it up.
Correct. Yeah, so you're moving it up, but you're actually inserting the name. You're nominating the person for the name insertion. Resolution is essentially. I'll call the roll. Once you nominate the person, put the name in the resolution, and we have a second, I'll, I'll read the resolution into the record. I will read it with the name, and then they will get a roll call vote. Um...
Councilman Harris.
Mr. Harrison, you were...
Councilman Harrison. Yes.
Uh, Mr. Harrison, could you speak up again one more time, please? I just want to identify where you're at.
Councilman Harrison.
There we go. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Vaughn up. Uh, and, but I would also defer to anything that Mr. Koloji has that may differ from that.
Well, where are we? Are we gonna do the presentation first?
No, sir, we're gonna...
We're...
They, they want to nominate somebody. Yeah. She wants to nominate somebody to the position, sir. She's made a motion to nominate someone to fill the name in on this resolution.
Well, somebody will second the motion, and then there'll be discussion, and then at the conclusion, uh, there could be a motion to insert that name into resolution, whatever the number is.
Council President, who's the nomination?
We never got that far yet because they were giving us legal advice. So, um, so, I'm gonna make a, uh, the motion for, to nominate a certain, uh, individual now.
Yes, ma'am.
And then, we'll need a second. Yes, I'm, I'm making a motion to nominate, um, let me get the name correct. Ms., uh, Ms. Wilkins, Sonia Wilkins.
I have a second. I have a sec, I have a motion, I have a first, uh, to insert Ms. Sonia Wilkins into the resolution. This is resolution twenty-two dash oh twenty-two. I have a second by Mr. Rodriguez. And call the roll for the insertion of the name, and then we'll read the resolution to approve the resolution, as actually how Mr. Koloji, uh, indicated. So, um, Ms. Caldwell Wilson to insert the name.
Yes.
Mr. Harrison.
I think we have thirty days. I don't know why we're doing this right now. So, my answer's no.
Mr. Michelle.
Are we allowed to ask questions before we do a vote?
Yeah, we're, we're actually, this is just to insert the name into the resolution. This is actually isn't appointing the council person, and then there'll be debate.
No, no. I want to ask questions first. No.
Good, thank you. Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Council President McBride?
Yes.
Uh, the name will be inserted into the resolution, Ms. Sonia Wilkins. I'm gonna read the resolution into the record with Ms. Wilkins', uh, name in it, and then, uh, I can get a motion and a second to approve that resolution, uh, and then the council can move forward with their debate. Uh, this is resolution twenty-two dash oh twenty-two, a resolution appointing Sonia Wilkins as a Trenton City Council member for the unexpired term of council at large seat set to expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two pursuant to NJSA forty cap A colon sixteen dash five. Whereas Councilman at Large Gerald Jarrell Blakely resigned his council seat at large effective eleven fifty-nine P M. January thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. And whereas pursuant to NJSA forty cap A colon sixteen dash five, the governing body may fill the seat for the unexpired term. And whereas pursuant to NJSA colon forty-eight sixteen dash seven, a new council member may be selected by a majority vote of the members remaining. Now therefore be resolved by the governing body of the city of Trenton that Sonia Wilkins is hereby appointed pursuant to NJSA forty colon cap A, I'm sorry, forty cap A colon sixteen dash five to sit as council member at large for the unexpired term of Jarrell Blakely, and Sonia Wilkins shall be entitled to all the rights, titles, and privileges of that office for the unexpired term to end eleven fifty-nine P M. December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. We have a motion to introduce resolution twenty-two dash oh twenty-two.
Come on.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Vaughn, a second by Ms. Caldwell Wilson.
The floor is open, Mr. Collin?
Yes, ma'am, uh, and just to remind the Council President, the mayor is actually allowed to participate.
Right, um, I guess, um, the mayor has asked to be heard, uh, once the motion, um, has, uh, once the motion was made, and so I will, um, allow the mayor to have the floor. Mayor, um, Mayor Garcia.
My only notification was that I was gonna take part if there was a tie, um, and it is unfortunate that the other names weren't submitted. Um, so, uh, uh, unless there's a tie, uh, I would not take part otherwise.
Is that, is that...
My understanding is there are other, there are other names that wanted to be considered.
Thank, thank you for your input, mayor.
Thank you, Madam President.
Um, um, Councilman, um, Harrison, is there any other council member that would like to speak before the vote is cast?
Councilman Michelle.
Councilman Michelle, go right ahead.
Yes, uh, was this party that you put up, was she your aide in any way? Was she an aide to you, uh, while you're doing your presidency? Did she work for you as an aide, which would be a conflict of interest? Uh, and the other thing is, uh, she tried to have, uh, Councilman Joe Harrison removed with petitions. I think it's a conflict of interest that she's now gonna be put on air for somebody she tried to get removed from his seat. So, I don't think it's, uh, a good choice at this time, especially if she was an aide to you, and, uh, you try to remove, uh, Councilman Harris. Uh, with all fairness, I just found this out, and, uh, I don't think it's a good move. I think that we should look at other, uh, people who want to be in this. I mean, I would hope you would clarify that if she was an aide or wasn't an aide. And, uh, with Mr. Harrison, I know for a fact she did petitions to remove. And so I think it's a conflict of interest with that, uh, person you put up. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Councilman Michelle. Uh, Councilman Harrison?
Yes, excuse me. We have thirty days to make this decision. We should get as many names, uh, from the community that would like to sit on, uh, the vacant seat, um, but at the end of the day, I would like, like Mr. Michelle just asked that question, Council President, I think that that deserves an answer. Thank you very much.
Thank, thank you, Councilman Harrison. Is there any other questions for any of the body? Um, seeing no questions, Mr. Collin, may we proceed?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, I have a motion by Ms. Vaughn. I have a second by Ms. Caldwell Wilson. This is resolution twenty-two dash oh twenty-two. This is a resolution appointing Ms. Sonia, uh, excuse me, my apologies, Ms. Sonia Wilkins, uh, as Trenton City Council member for the unexpired term for council at large seat to expire on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two pursuant to NJSA forty cap A colon sixteen dash five. Uh, I will now call the roll. Mr. Blakely's seat is vacant. Uh, Ms. Caldwell Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
No.
Mr. Michelle?
My answer's gonna be a no, but my questions that I asked were never answered, which I don't think is, uh, fairly, uh, put out, but my answer is a no.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
And Council President?
Yes.
Council President McBride is a yes.
The resolution carries by vote four to two. Ms. Sonia Wilkins, congratulations for your appointment. Uh, are you here tonight? I believe you are here tonight, ma'am. Uh, let me get you so I can highlight you. Uh, you are now a member of the city council. Ms. Wilkins, I will actually be, Council President, if I could just have two minutes, I'd like to email Ms. Wilkins the backup material, the confidential backup material, uh, real quick so she can at least follow along with tonight's presentation, some other items.
Yes, I, I, I would like to give her an opportunity to speak if she would like.
Yes, ma'am, and while, uh, and while we do that, um, I'd also like to thank, uh, all the other people who had submitted, uh, resumes through the city clerk's office for consideration. Uh, and thank you very much for your interest, and thank you for, you know, offering to help and assist the city of Trenton. Um, congratulations, uh, Council President. Did you want to turn the floor over to her?
Yes, I, I, I just first wanted to, um, say that we did receive, um, four resumes, and they were all, uh, people of the community, and any one of those, uh, individuals would have made us, uh, uh, very proud. And so, thank you for your civic engagement. Um, we would like to see more of that, and again, I just would like to thank all of the applicants. Um, Mrs., um, Mrs. Wilkins, um, do you have your, uh, camera on so the, uh, community could recognize who you are?
Yes, I do. Yes, I do, Council President. Um, if I may have a few words, I wanted to say good evening to you all, to the council president and to the city council members. I am first most humbled and honored by your vote of confidence in me to serve with you as a city council member of this governing body. My heart's desire, true desire, is to work cohesively with you all to assist and build Trenton back better. To Mayor Garcia, I look forward to working with you and your administration for our main objective of assisting and serving this city, Trenton and Trentonians. To my family and friends on this call, thank you, thank you, thank you for your continued love, support, and well wishes. To the residents of this city, I look forward to assisting, aiding, and serving you to the best of my ability, passion, commitment, and due diligence. Just to give you a briefing, I was born and raised in the city. My children were born and raised in the city. My mother was born and raised in the city. There are five generations of us in this city. And in closing, I want to say that I love Trenton. I am Trenton, and I'm just a kid from Trenton. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you, Council President, and I render my time.
Thank you. Excuse me, Mr. Um, Collin, um, we may continue with the, with the docket?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, hold on just one second. Council President? Council President Edward Koloji?
Yes, Mr. Koloji.
Yes, I just wanted to advise the new council, uh, person after congratulating them that if they have not had an opportunity to familiarize themselves with everything or anything on the docket, they are free to abstain. If they feel they do have sufficient familiarity, they are free to vote. There is no hard or fast rule, uh, in terms of somebody just being appointed this evening, but I wanted to just advise that there's nothing improper about refraining or recusing yourself from a vote of abstaining if you don't feel you have sufficient, uh, conversancy with the issue.
Thank you so much, Mr. Koloji. And so, um, tonight is a conference night, and so, um, we're gonna go down the docket as we, uh, normally do. Thank you, uh, Mr. Collin. Will you continue, please?
Yes, ma'am. First, uh, first up tonight, uh, after, after congratulations, uh, council member, um, we have the presentation from Housing Economic Development Division Planning Jeffrey Wilkinson reviewing the land development ordinance. Council President, would you like to recognize Mr. Wilkinson?
Yes, definitely.
This is Director Daniels?
Yes.
Council President?
Daniels.
Yes, ma'am. Um, if, if it's in order, I would like to introduce what we're doing tonight.
Oh, well, by all means, it's, it's your presentation.
Thank you, ma'am. Um, good evening, Council President and to council, and congratulations to the new council member, Ms. Councilwoman Sonia Wilkins. In twenty seventeen, the city of Trenton adopted the Trenton two fifty master plan as its vision for future development. This plan received an award from the American Planning Association, New Jersey Chapter for Outstanding Community Engagement, and continues to guide work across the city. A next step in implementing the master plan is to update the city's land development ordinance, also known as the L D O or zoning ordinance, to modernize it and make sure it conforms with the vision of the master plan. This update is essential. There are requirements in the municipal land use law for all municipal zoning ordinance, ordinances to be based on the adopted master plan, and a failure to update the ordinance could lead to a developer challenging the validity of the current ordinance. The Trenton Division of Planning has been hard at work since twenty nineteen drafting the new L D O. The supervising planner, Jeffrey Wilkinson, will now explain the process and community engagement that we have undertaken so far, and I thank you and I yield to Mr. Jeffrey.
Problem. Uh, I can allow you. Uh, who is, who is the other party?
Arista Strungis.
That would be me. I'm Arista Strungis.
Okay, we'll speak up again so I can find you.
Hi, uh, it's me, uh, Arista Strungis. I'm from Camero's. I have a PowerPoint to share.
Okay, I can't actually add more than one person. I've given it to Mr. Wilkinson.
Okay, give it, give it to Arista because she has the, she has the PowerPoint.
Okay, hold on, I gotta...
Who is that person?
She's our consultant.
She's part of, she's part of the city, or she's a consultant? Like, who is she?
Uh, I'm a consultant. I'm joined on this call with, uh, my associate, Chris Jeanette. Uh, we're, we're from Camero's. We're a planning and zoning consulting firm that's been working with the city.
Yeah, I was advised of your presence. I was told that Mr. Wilkinson would be making the presentation. I'm not concerned about that, but for some reason I can't give it to anybody else. I can't remove Mr. Wilkinson now, nor can I give it to you, so I'm not exactly sure what's going on. Uh, so I, I think Mr. Wilkinson's gonna have to do the showing, uh, part of that, because I'm gonna do a sidekick figure it out.
So, you want to just shoot it over to me really quickly, and I'll just start with my...
I've already made you a presenter, so I don't have any other hope to keep you on that.
Um, okay, let me see if I can get that to you.
Okay, while, while she's getting that to me, I will just, um, discuss what we've done briefly so far up to date. Um, uh, in twenty nineteen, like, um, Director Daniels mentioned, um, we started our public engagement and meetings to obtain information from the community to understand the current issues and opportunities with our current land development ordinance or zoning ordinance, and derive an approach we can take to address the issues and embrace the opportunities. Based on that engagement, a draft of the technical review report, which is the foundation of the L D O, uh, was completed and presented to city council in October of twenty nineteen. Afterward, much of twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one was utilized to draft our current document that is now available for a public comment. The draft was released in September of twenty twenty-one. We, we also created a designated website for this project where you can find the various documents, videos, presentations, and F A Qs are available for public access. Since September of last year, we have been actively seeking opportunities to present and draft and have, and, and have, and have had the opportunity of about twenty appearances throughout the city. As you can see, we have presented to various organizations, well, we have presented to various organizations, boards and commissions, neighborhood associations, and have appeared at a few events within the city. Um, once, what, once I get that up, I can show you exactly who we presented to. Um, Arista, were you able to send that to me?
You should have it in your inbox.
Here, I got it now. Sorry about that. Are you guys able to see that?
Yes, sir.
All right, perfect.
What's your name? Badges?
Um...
I'm going back to work more than I'm...
So, these are the, if you see the list of, um, our various, um, presentations we've done throughout the city, um, and then also now we're presenting to city council. And I'll introduce the consultant of the, um, to the planning... And I'll introduce the um consultant of the um to the planning staff. Um, and we've been working closely with them to complete this project. Arista Strungis is a fellow of the American Institute of Certified Planners and a principal of Camero's LTD, one of the top zoning firms in the country. Arista, you can take it from here. Do you want me to just move on to to the second to the next slide?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay. Go ahead.
Um, okay, so thank you all for having us here again. Uh, my name's Arista Strungis. I'm from Camero's. I'm here with Chris Jeanette as well, who's also a principal at Camero's, and we've been working closely with the city. Um, on the LDO, as you can see here from the engagement slide, starting kind of way back in 2019. Obviously, the pandemic kind of slowed things down to to where we are now. But we're very happy here to present the proposed draft um that we've been kind of showing to others within the community and and talk a little bit about what is in here. Obviously, it's a ordinance, so it's a lot of legal language in there. Um, so this is kind of a high-level overview of what we've presented within there. Uh, Jeff, if you can go to next slide.
Do you see it?
Um, it's still stuck on LDO engagement.
Interesting.
One more back. Maybe do slideshow, play from start, and then just click through.
Okay, you want compartmentalized, right?
Uh, I wanted LDO update goals, the one right before it.
Okay.
Uh, so the reason uh that we're we're looking at the LDO and as the director indicated earlier as well is uh the LDO accomplishes a number of goals. Uh, the first one is, and Jeff, it disappeared, but I can kind of go through it.
Oh, my goodness. All right, sorry about that. I don't know why it's why it's not allowing me. It stopped. The sharing stopped for some reason. There we go.
There we go. Uh, so one of the primary goals of a new land development ordinance is the implementation of Trenton 250 uh as indicated the award-winning plan that really talks about Trenton's future. And so the LDO works to implement the land use and development goals. There's a lot of stuff in Trenton 250, so it's from a zoning perspective, really focusing on that aspect of it and trying to bring those policies uh that were adopted uh into place to really start set the stage for them to to become a reality. Uh, the other thing is is the ordinance is is older, and so it's not quite as user-friendly and predictable and consistent as an ordinance should be. So a lot of this is kind of modernizing by integrating land use and urban design principles, objective standards, making it really easy for people to see, you know, what can be developed. Uh, we'd like to, you know, create an ordinance that allows for more development by right and less special approvals. And what we mean by that is really variances that have become common really shouldn't have to be variances. We want to look at things that are just kind of happening, whether it's, you know, adjusting yard standards or what have you to really focus on uh making sure that, you know, those simple things are allowed to happen more easily. We also want to uh enhance neighborhood character uh and and ensure more creativity and flexibility when and as people are building new developments, and then make sure that the process of development maintains a transparency so people will know what's going on as as applications arise. Next slide, please. Uh, so one of the first things we we looked at, um, and you if you remember, we talked about this way back when we were uh talking about the tech report back in September of 2019, was compartmentalization. And this is really organizing things in the proper spaces. So looking at, you know, making sure we've got a logical system that works within this ordinance. So starts with an introduction. What is this ordinance? How does it apply? What are all the different terms used in the ordinance and what do they mean? Uh, and how do you measure things like building height, making sure that there's one measurement for that and that it's consistent? Then moves to the heart of the ordinance, which is the district. So looking at things like the residential districts, commercial and mixed use, industrial, and the few special purpose districts that are within the city of Trenton. Then finally, to the uses, what's allowed within each of these districts and making it really clear so people can understand what they can do with their lot and what can happen next door. And then finally, development standards, kind of everything that happens outside of the principal buildings. So outside of, say, your main house, really looking at things, how much parking is required? What kind of signs can I have if I'm a commercial use? Is landscape required? What are the accessory structures? You know, really creating all the rules for those. Next slide. And then finally, kind of the ordinance ends with its administration. So what are the different applications and approvals? Uh, the various ones that filter through land developments? And then how do you amend this ordinance that we're looking at as well as the zoning map? Looking at the historic district regulations, we've been speaking with the historic district commission. And then finally, how is the LDO applied? What happens that with things that don't meet the standards that are non-conformities? How do we enforce this? What are the rules of the land use boards? Um, and as per New Jersey Municipal Land Use Law, including a fee schedule and a development checklist. And as you look at the ordinance, i- if you've had a chance to take a look at it on the website, uh, the final organizational principle was really looking at how do we make this easier to use? And again, we talked about measurements and definitions, but you'll see what's within this LDO is a lot more graphics that help to explain the provisions and moving things into tables and matrices so that it's a lot easier to process a lot of information in a much simpler table format. So one of the first things that you'll see as you look at the ordinance is that we've done some modernization of the use structure. Um, we revised the current cumulative use approach, which means that, you know, certain districts relied on the district below it in order to see what's allowed. So it would say something like the A di- the B district allows everything in A, uh, plus these additional uses. What we really tried to do is tailor it to the different uses allowed in the districts by putting it into that matrix. Uh, we looked at a more modern generic use approach uh for some of the different uses that are there. You see here retail goods establishment, um, rather than saying shoe store, record store, clothing store, bookstore. Uh, what we've done is kind of summed it up as a retail goods establishment. Uh, however, we understand uh many uses are very sensitive and that they still need to be addressed individually. So there are certain uses that are still called out specifically in the draft uh that have either special standards associated with them or they're only allowed in certain districts. So, you know, really making sure that we're trying to be sensitive to those. Um, and then finally, certain uses still require standards. And so you'll see a whole chapter within the ordinance that talks about the standards required for a use to to establish itself on a lot. And so, next slide. What you see here is actually an excerpt of the table from the LDO. This is the use matrix that we were talking about. And as you can see, as you go through this matrix, uh, you kind of take a look and you can see that certain uses are permitted, certain uses are conditional, and when the cell there is blank, uh, it means it's not allowed within that district. Next slide, please. So what this really does, it it allows you to kind of two ways into the ordinance. Uh, the first is, say, I wanted to establish a daycare home as indicated there in that example. I would just go across the chart and I can see all the different districts where I can establish a daycare home. Uh, the other way that it works is I can look in what district I'm in, and as I look down, I can see what kinds of uses are permitted and conditional and prohibited. So it becomes kind of easier to see what I can do with my property and for my neighbors to understand um exactly what, you know, may happen next to them if that district is zoned differently. So we also, as we looked at it, again, we took the more modern generic use approach, but we also, you know, added some uses that have been emerging. Uh, we know that there's a lot of mixed use and creative uses happening in Trenton, and Trenton 250 speaks to them. Things like the corner store, uh, things like maker creator spaces, whether it be specialty food such as a coffee roaster, community gardens, microbreweries, food truck parks, kind of really bringing those aspects into uh the ordinance. And we also understand, as as we have in other cities that we've worked in, that there's a variety of sensitive uses. Uh, many of them are social service uses, things like drug treatment options and shelters, uh, and making sure we're addressing those and placing those properly within districts and in some cases, including standards uh as to where they're allowed. And then things like, as we saw, we talked about retail goods establishment. Um, but what we've done, understanding the sensitivities, uh, we've singled out retail sales of alcohol as a separate use, and then it it has its own set of permissions and regulations associated with it. So what you'll see here is it really from the current ordinance, it's a it's a really big jump to a new district structure. And this is really based upon the directions received from Trenton 250 and looking at everything that was put forward in that plan and how it all kind of lays out on the ground on the map. So you'll see here, the first set of districts that we have are the residential districts. Uh, first set is low density, single family, and these are really addressing and and kind of three categories, the existing single-family neighborhoods within Trenton. Then where you see the one that that really is more of the majority of Trenton is the medium density, the RM1, the RM2. It's mix of dwellings, single family to row house. And in the RM2, we're allowing for some limited commercial. And then finally, high density, we have two districts here as well, the RH1 and the RH2. You see primarily a difference in height of forty feet in one and and sixty-five feet in RH2. Uh, and really here, we allow everything from single family to multifamily and both allow for some limited commercial uses to serve the adjacent residents in those areas. Then the commercial and mixed use districts, again, working with uh Trenton 250, we we really looked at the different commercial characters that exist within the city. Uh, and so we've established these. There's the Main Street corridor, which is probably something you can identify within your mind's eye. It's a mixed use environment along your most prominent historic walkable corridors, a sixty-foot height there. Um, then looking kind of moving away from Main Street into things more like corridor commercial. These are the commercial uses that are along the city's more trafficked mixed-use thoroughfares. So kind of moving away from that more historic character in Main Street uh to this corridor commercial. We've also allowed for a mixed-use flex district. This is a vertical and horizontally mixed-use district, so it really works with the historic character that's there. And what we're trying to do is encourage the reuse of existing buildings that create more flexible spaces. And then finally, a transition district, the MUT, the mixed-use transition. It's a mix of commercial and residential and really intended to help serve as a transition between the residential neighborhoods and more intensely developed mixed-use areas. And so the highest-density mixed-use districts uh are, these may be familiar to you all just kind of even thinking about when you think about the tallest buildings. It's really looking at areas like downtown Trenton, um, an area along the riverfront, the riverfront mixed use, and then transit-oriented development, which is really around the uh the transit stations and areas like that, really allowing for these more significant heights, really encouraging mixed use. Um, we worked closely, in addition to Trenton 250, we worked closely with the plans that were affiliated with each of these areas as well uh to make sure that we were helping to implement those plans as they were putting forth zoning regulation zoning recommendations as well. Uh, the industrial districts, these are kind of a little bit more logical. You have the the light industrial, which is office and kind of the the more contained light industrial users. And then the IG, which would be the general industrial or the heaviest industrial users. And then again, similar to that flex di- district I just mentioned, the industrial mixed-use district. This is areas where you've got light industrial starting to mix with some commercial that could be mixing with residential. Everybody's kind of getting along in these areas and creating a really unique mixed-use environment that we see often in cities like Trenton, like Trenton. And then so what we wanted to do was make sure that we had a district that could accommodate that. And then finally, special purpose. Um, there is an institutional district. This is government facilities, schools, healthcare institutions, kind of those significantly larger ones that have more of a campus-like development pattern. And so really creating a district for them as well as the open space and recreation, which looks at the larger parks and recreation areas in the city. Uh, and I just do want to be clear that what we we have not uh said that you can't have a park anywhere else. All the districts allow for parks. These are just intended to protect those larger areas of parkland that are present within the city. And all of these come up on the map. Um, and so we have made a proposed zoning map. Again, we worked very closely with staff on this. Uh, we use the guidance of Trenton 250 and its future land use plan as well as the existing land use that's in place. Um, and we've been vetting this map with with various public groups. Um, and we encourage you to to visit the website. You're never going to be able to zoom in here on the PowerPoint. Uh, but a very good PDF exists on that website that you can really get into uh and take a look at what is on the map and what things have been proposed to be zoned in line with those districts that I just spoke of. And also, what you'll see within the districts is that, you know, again, talked a little bit about that in the intro slide, that we really wanted to create some design standards to just really create the good bones of design that that can happen, but not control the architecture. But, you know, certain things like minimum amount of windows on the ground floor uh where the entries have to face so they face the street, and so it's really dealing with those. So here you see one that's more residential. And the next slide will show you one um that is a that is a denser urban form, commercial really. Or this could be mixed use as well. So you can see that there's some standards that have been applied uh to those as well. Next slide. Uh, one of the new requirements within the ordinance is the idea of onsite uh onsite green space or civic space. Uh, what we've really said is that when we look at kind of larger-scale development, so that would be things like, say, residential development, whether it's a multifamily building or a mixed-use building with residential. If you have uh ten or more units, we want to require some of this. If it's non-residential, uh, we'd like a certain percentage of the lot area to be in this green sa- space or civic space. And I just want to be clear on this, and you can see it as you take a look at the ordinance. We have a variety of options, and we've we've heard from some folks about, you know, maybe including some more. This doesn't mean that you have to create just a plot of green, a a plot of grass on the land that you're you're building, you're building on. There's a number of different options. These can take place between things like balconies and terraces for for multifamily. It can be creating a community space similar to the uh the one created in the Starbucks in downtown, using a lot of different methods to try to create these public civic spaces uh a- and really kind of bringing that development form into new development within the city. Uh, we've also looked at uh other things as we talk about these onsite development standards. We've looked at exterior lighting, and just to be clear, um, as this is the land development ordinance, we only control the private property aspect, so this isn't streetlights. Um, this is things like in parking lots or lighting of larger developments, kind of some standards for that to help with sustainability issues like light pollution and glare and light trespass onto neighboring properties. Uh, and then addressing a variety of accessory structures. Um, and so these are a a variety of things. They can be very common, fences, garages, home occupations. These are things you you're likely familiar with, um, as well as bringing in things like sustainability. So that would be private solar and wind, um, either panels or turbines, cold frames, which is that image you see right there up at the top, um, as well as electric vehicle charging. Um, and then also things like urban agriculture, the keeping of of chickens and bees. And we did want to point out that we also made allowances for accessory dwelling units. Um, now, these aren't a blanket allowance. You can't just put them anywhere. Uh, but what we did was say maybe it is appropriate per the way we've drafted it for single-family lots of five thousand square feet or more that you could have one of these if you meet the location, the size, and the design standards that are all associated with those. Next slide. Uh, we also took a look at parking and loading and really looked at making sure we had all the regulations we needed in place for parking and loading. So this is things like parking lot and structured design. Um, you know, in areas where you have a parking structure, some may require some ground floor active uses um in line with what's coming from the state of New Jersey, looking at required electric vehicle spaces, required bicycle parking, uh, and then updates to things like loading or keeping of commercial vehicles. Next slide. And so probably one of the the biggest things within the LDO i- is what we've called a realistic approach to parking. Um, and you will see if if you're interested in this and kind of how this has worked out, there's a lot of information on the website. Um, you know, what this says is really no parking minimums would be required. Uh, and so essentially, you can put in parking. It's not a prohibition, but it's just essentially saying that the market should be able to control kind of the minimum amount of parking in a new development. However, we know that some things have more impact. And so what we wanted to do was look at a transportation demand management plan, um, which is really looking on a case-by-case basis for certain developments to see if, you know, all the different factors, does parking need to be provided? Do we not need to provide parking? Are there ways to alleviate that without building parking? So it really looks at it holistically and comprehensively. Um, so the TDM, this transportation demand management plan would be required if you're building a new building of ten thousand square feet or more. Um, if you're looking to renovate an existing building of twenty-five thousand square feet or more in area. Uh, and then any multifamily or mixed-use development that has ten or more dwelling units because at that point, you're you're be- becoming more impactful with more residents. So the question always becomes is why did we take this approach after much discussion uh and talking with staff and wanting to bring this forward to the to the public and to the council as well? You know, Trenton developed historically without off-street parking. And so without requiring minimums, it makes reuse and redevelopments easier. Again, it's that variance situation I spoke of. You know, it can negatively impact neighborhood character because what's going to happen is the amount of parking you're required to provide is going to drive the way the site's designed, rather than really looking at the context of the building in the neighborhood. Again, reduces variances, which again, had cost and time to development and and can turn some people away. And also sustainability. Um, a lot of parking is a lot of stormwater runoff, a lot of heat island effects, really just not not working in concert with an environmentally friendly approach. approach. However, you know, if you choose, as we said, we're not prohibiting parking lots, but if you choose to build one, we also did want to take a look at how landscape interplays with that. Now, there is more to the landscape section than just parking, but that is a significant portion for lots of certain sizes, you know, interior parking lot landscape would be required, landscape around the perimeter would also be required, we looked at things like buffer yards where you could have a use that is really not compatible with the one that it's kind of abutting in the back, and so creating some landscaping there to help mitigate that impact, and things like curb lawn and street trees. And just a couple of quick illustrations from the ordinance on the next slide. This is what you see here when I spoke of parking lot interior, and then on the next Just an example of some buffer yard standards, so this would be, say you had industrial abutting residential, you want to create a buffer on that industrial site so that you minimize what's going to happen to that neighbor over there on the other side of the fence. Next slide. We also updated the sign regulations, these did need to be updated because of Supreme Court cases that have come down that talk about content neutrality, so really we just, we can't ever talk about what is on a sign, which makes defining them and, you know, really controlling anything that's on them, we can't do that anymore. So we wanted to make sure that we gave you an approach that meets the legal standard, so we've addressed all the different categories, those signs that are prohibited, those signs that are exempt from a permit, those that require a permit, both in the permanent and temporary categories. And then we looked at each of the districts that we have proposed, and tailored the types of signs allowed to the form of those districts, so really looking at what types of signs would be appropriate for, say, a Main Street district, and what would be appropriate for something that's, you know, say, mixed-use transition, and what are the differences in making sure that we're working together in terms of that. Next slide. And you will see within there, there is, this is just an excerpt, this is not all of the signs that we've regulated, but we've tried to make it clear for users what signs are allowed, do they require a permit, do they not require a permit, and where are they permitted to go, and things like, you know, common things like a wall sign, oh, no, you can keep going. A wall sign, or something a little bit that may be more appropriate in a more intense district, like on the next slide. Something like a roof sign for much more significantly bigger buildings. And then finally, we looked at the land development applications. Now, understanding New Jersey and understanding, there is municipal land use law which comes from the state that talks to us a lot about how these different applications are processed and who does the approvals, you know, we were very careful to make sure that that all aligns, and so you can see here, conditional uses, the C variance, the D variance, site plan review, we really just wanted to make sure that we had everything in line with the state, and that these things are clear for people to pick up the ordinance and see how they work through the process. Next slide. And then finally, non-conformities. I think as you look through and you see what we've proposed for districts and what we've proposed for uses, what we're trying to do is kind of bring things in line so that we don't have as many non-conformities, or at least the ones that are, you know, it's a logical building, it should be there, but we didn't, I mean, that's okay, but we didn't want to make it, you know, we wanted to bring it in line with the district standards, but unfortunately, as is the case in every single ordinance, some things will remain non-conforming. And so what we wanted to do is put the rules in place for all those different elements, so if I have a use and it's abandoned for a year, you know, what are the rules for that, well then it can't come back. Non-conforming structures, making sure that there's some flexibilities in rebuilding for non-residential and residential buildings, how you can use a lot, we took site elements out of the structure, so this is things like landscaping, parking lot design, exterior lighting requirements, and so the structure's no longer non-conforming, the site element is, and so made rules for how those aspects are controlled. And then finally, signs, what happens when a sign is damaged that doesn't conform to the ordinance, you know, when does it need to be replaced with a conforming sign? And so with that, I do encourage everyone, I know, I know we have some members of the public with us here as well, Trenton 250 LDO update has been our hub for this project, and we've included everything, I think Jeffrey has mentioned already, guides that you can download from here, frequently asked questions that we've been updating over time, the full text of the ordinance is there, this presentation, a video of this presentation is there as well, as well as other things, you know, such as a comment form, which has been very important to us, we've been receiving comments through that forum, it allows us to document exactly what people are thinking and saying and sporting and questioning, and so that's really important to us as well. And with that, I'm going to let Jeffrey close out with the process.
Thanks, Arista.
Can you please return the control, thank you.
Yeah, so Mr. Wilkinson, I want to give the council some time to come in and ask questions.
Yeah. This is the final slide right here. So, as you can see in the, on this slide, bordered in purple, we are still very early in the process. Once we complete this initial round of public comments, which are, which we are announcing right now that we've extended the deadline for public comments to February 28th, and so we will review the comments we have received thus far in a public planning board meeting soon after the deadline for comments. We will update the draft based on public comments, and a second draft will be released for public review at that time. At the conclusion of the second round of public comments, we will prepare the final draft. Once the final draft is completed, we will move into the formal process of ordinance adoption. That final draft will then be provided to city council for referral to the planning board for consistency review with the city's master plan. Planning board will report back to city council with its findings, along with any recommendations, and an up-to-date land development ordinance for first and second readings for council. So that concludes it, I mean, so that's the conclusion of our presentation, I'd like to thank the-
If anyone would like to ask any questions in reference to this presentation.
Yes, I would.
Is that councilwoman involved? Yes, is that councilwoman involved?
Yes, I want to make sure that we've included all the inputs. One is, I just want to, we talked about the parking. I want to make sure that the land development ordinance has incorporated, you talked about parking, street parking, parking lots, but you really didn't include, you know, parking structures like decks, I just want to know, have you worked or contacted the Trenton Parking Authority? Mr. Wilkinson, can you answer that question?
No, this is really only, the land development ordinance is specifically for private development on private property, it doesn't look into public easement or public streets or public parking facilities, this is-
Well, the reason, alright.
Okay.
The reason why I say that, because when you talk about redevelopment, right, you're going to be having private investors look at that ordinance, right, and you look at those maps, and when private developers come in and make proposals to the redevelopment agency and to council for approval, we want to make sure that the land development ordinance have those provisions in there for potential investors who are, you know, who all intents and purposes are private entity, so you would have to definitely, and I know the Trenton Parking Authority also deals with redevelopment, so it would be in our interest as a public entity to consult with them, no?
Yep, and in those instances where the, you know, Trent Public, I'm sorry, Trent Parking Authority is proposing development, they most likely will, you know, they will most likely, hopefully abide by the land development ordinance in regards to bulk vary, I mean, the bulk requirements for a specific development, and then also provide a courteous review by planning board, so that the planning board itself can provide comments based on their development proposal.
Yeah, and then additionally, Mr. Wilkinson, those parking decks, those assets owned by the Trenton Parking Authority, they are public, they are owned by the residents and taxpayers of the city of Trenton, so they are public structures.
Yes.
They are public structures, so, again, I would want to ensure that the, this exercise incorporates input from the commissioners over at the Parking Authority. So I would think that in your thirty days or, you know, during the extension period, that you and the consultants maybe have a meeting with them and see what potential inputs they have if they haven't chimed in already.
Yeah, I mean, that's a good point, I mean, we can, hopefully, if they have a meeting this, this month, we can jump on their agenda. I do know some people that are on the commission have provided comments to this date, but it would be great to actually be able to get on their agenda in the presentation.
Yeah, and that's it for now, thank you, Council President.
Is there any other councilmember? Yes, go right ahead, Councilman Rodriguez.
My question is, you mentioned parking, hopefully private parking, and when you were talking all the time, I was looking at State Street Downtown, but I didn't see any scene regarding Chambersburg. I'm concerned about the parking for the bars in Trenton. We have areas in Chambersburg where they have bars, but they have no parking at all. And what they do is people from outside of Trenton, so I'm parking in front of people's houses, and, you know, a lot of noisy people, the urinating public, they have fights, right, around Chambersburg, you know, some areas of Chambersburg, it's happening now, it's been happening for a while. Are you going to be contemplating that aspect of parking, you know, the regulating, how many parking spaces are required for at least new liquor establishments, new bars, restaurants, how, how is that going to be accommodated there? Because downtown, they have the high-rise parking there, also there is an option, but in Chambersburg, you know, Franklin Street, Washington Street, there's no space there, so how are you going to work with that?
Thank you, Councilman Rodriguez. We, yeah, I recall you gave us this comment back in November, and we have added that comment to our list, and we will, we are going to review that and try to address that specifically in the update. We haven't, you know, we haven't done our, we haven't reviewed our comments, and we haven't finalized on anything specifically on how we're going to address all the comments, but that is one thing that we are going to address specifically in the second draft and take into consideration.
Oh, Council President, can I just ask one other question, just a housekeeping item?
Yes, go right ahead.
Mr. Wilkinson and the consulting firm, around community outreach, I saw the listing of, you know, community organizations that you presented too, but, you know, I mean, I'm familiar with all of them, and I attend some of those meetings as well, and I know that they're not very well-attended, and I just want to make sure that the population of Trenton that are, that is now being reported in the United States census, it's like ninety thousand. So, I don't know what number of, the number of Trentonians that, that you guys have tracked and have done outreach with, but I would like to see an outreach plan besides just the list of saying that you met with these groups, you should have an outreach plan, and it should be deployed every time there are changes to the ordinance. And one of the things that I didn't hear discussed was, in your outreach plan is mailings, have, I mean, everybody in Trenton, you know, everybody does not have access to internet or can access or have mobile phones or can access the city's website, and that seems to be, you know, one mechanism that you guys offer, but we need to, I would like to see a plan, a comprehensive communication plan that takes into account our diverse demographic that economically here in the city of Trenton, everybody does not have access to internet, and we need to be a little bit more thoughtful to that and provide other ways to circulate this information. So have we put that in, have you given any thought to that? I didn't see anything in the local media, local newspapers, publications, nothing in the Nubian News, nothing in the Trentonian, the Trenton Times, so, you know, NJ.com, I would hope that your communication plan is a little bit more robust than just the city website. And additionally, who is the survey engineer, I would like to see the MAP, you know, certified, who, I mean, which company, which surveying company are we utilizing for the MAP, Mr. Wilkinson?
It's not a survey, it is basically, it's done by parcels that are, these are, I mean, tax parcels that are identified within the tax assessor's office, and so that those districts are pretty much an aggregate of those specific areas of the city, so it's done by district and there, and by community, we don't look at specific parcels to provide a specific district on one parcel, we do it with a group of parcels. And I don't know, Arista, you want to elaborate on that, maybe I didn't answer that as appropriately.
Yeah, I mean, as we worked with the current existing zoning map that is in place, as well as the land use map that was created by Trenton 250, using those, that tax parcel data, and I don't know if Chris Janett is on this call, he may even have more specific information than we do as to how we created this, but that's typical to a zoning process and a zoning map process is using the existing map to build on that and move forward, they are typically not certified, I actually haven't heard of that, because we're not doing any actual surveying, we're using the existing geographic information services material that's already, that the city already has.
Yeah, hello, this is Chris Janett from Camaro's, I can speak a little bit more to that, so, you know, and kind of inferring from your question, the zoning map itself doesn't really describe any kind of legal property boundaries, you know, by meets and bounds, and it can't be taken, you know, to really indicate private property at a precise level. What it does essentially is indicates the general area of the districts, and then it also gives some rules for interpretation as well, so as the regulations themselves are being applied, there's a manner for interpretation in terms of exactly where those boundaries fall on a real property. So there's no survey generally put into that.
Okay, very well, thank you. Thank you, Dr. President.
All right, thank you. So I just have a couple of questions that I would like to ask, and my questions is always centered around condemnation and eminent domain. Can you tell me if any of these properties that you're going to be either the area in which you're going to be taking and using properties, because you talked about single families and, and then you talked about the mixed use, and then you had up on the screen areas, so I'm just, I'm just concerned about how you're going to acquire those properties, is this, is condemnation coming into play in eminent domain? Those are my concerns, so I need to know how you're going to inquire these properties in order to complete your plan. How is these properties going to be obtained by you or the city or, because I'm concerned about eminent domain, and I've expressed that to you many a times, Mr. Wilkinson, and I need to know exactly how we're going to obtain those properties.
Yeah, this does, this does not do anything about acquisition of properties, or it doesn't, there is no condemnation or anything of that like, this is really providing guidance for developers on what to do with private land. There is, there isn't, there isn't any plan in regard, this is not a redevelopment plan, this is not a redevelopment ordinance, this is strictly indicating our zoning and what we can do with our land to help effectuate the vision from the master plan. Yeah, so there is no, there is no acquisition of properties associated with this ordinance.
Okay, because, so, so, the other question that I had was in- was in reference to the capital city redevelopment. Um, because they had actually put out maps, and their maps are similar to, to yours. The, the areas that they are talking about redeveloping are similar to yours. So are you working in conjunction with the, uh, capital city redevelopment? Um, how is this, how is this, uh, happening? Because the capital city redevelopment, which is run by the state, they have a map, and they have areas in which they intend to come in and redevelop. And now you have these plans, so how, how is this coming together here? I, I, I'm just trying to get a feel of what they're doing and what we're doing.
Okay, so in regards to the Capital City Redevelopment Corporation and their Renaissance Plan, that is really a, a, a vision, a vision plan for downtown. Um, it's not a redevelopment plan. It doesn't, it doesn't talk about specific properties to redevelop. What it does do is provide guidance on, I mean, and, and what they tried to do with us um, in partnership was to try to make sure whatever they're talking about in their plan aligns with our, uh, this proposed zoning ordinance, aligns with the master plan. Um, and so they really tried to make sure that they were using the same language as the city is using and, and their plans, and then they're also, they have what they call, which, which is called an urban code, which is kind of like a, a land development ordinance light. It, it doesn't necessarily get into the details. Um, it's just giving some really high-level parameters around a district, but doesn't really go into the details like this, this land development ordinance does for specific properties within downtown.
All right, Councilwoman Coral Wilson.
Um, yes, Jeffrey, I don't know if this would, um, actually pertain to your plan, the zoning plan here, but there's a area in the North Ward of Trenton that's like the triangle. And that triangle is made up of human services, um, rehab establishments, um, homeless shelters, the animal shelter, um, all kinds of service facilities. And that actually abuts on the area by City Hall and State Street, which is in dire need of economic development.
Are you talking about Coborn area?
Yeah, and, and, and see, the problem is that I don't know how we're going to be able to, um, develop these plans as long as we have that concentrated large area of services, whether it be drug rehabilitation, whether it be, um, the clinic, whether it be the mental health center, whether it be the homeless shelter, the soup kitchen. Um, I mean, can somebody explain to me as to how we can redevelop that area so that it's not all concentrated in one area, which leads to us having folks that go to those areas come downtown, and we have issues downtown?
Um, well, I mean, that's a big question. Um, but, you know, and, and we should, you know, I, we would definitely take that question. I really want to get from you specifically, maybe I should meet with you separately, the area, the triangle that you're talking about, and we can, we can, we can look at how that's being zoned with this particular ordinance. Let me make a distinction here. This is a land development ordinance. It's not a plan. It's just saying, this is how we want our land to be developed. Um, it, so it doesn't really indicate a vision. It doesn't indicate, um, you know, it, uh, it, it, it's not a plan. So what we're saying is, when a developer comes in, they want to develop on this particular property, these are your guidance, and these are your rules that you have to abide by for this particular property. And that's, that's primarily, primarily all this ordinance does. It, it really just puts, it updates the ordinance to, to align with the master plan for the city, um, and pretty much modernizes and, and makes it more intuitive, layman terms, and really try to, we really try to make this ordinance as digestible by the public as possible. Um, and, and, and just really like, so anyone who does, who's not interested or who, who don't, who don't know the technical terms can pick up this document and learn something from it. It's specifically about their property that they own or a neighborhood. I'm sorry, go ahead.
So my, so my question to you is, should one of these organizations close down? Can that be changed for, you know, I mean, we're looking at land development and, you know, I mean, obviously, you know, with, with this situation in the North Ward, that whole area is going nowhere fast. And with all, with the 350 plan, and with this plan, and land development plan, and all of that, none of it, none of it addresses the hurdles that we have with economic development and safety in those areas.
Yeah, that, that lets you and I meet and talk about specifically the areas you're talking about. And I can, I can really, um, really answer that question more concisely because, um, then I can tell you what this, this land development ordinance is proposing in regards to regulations and guidance for development on those particular properties. That the question is, if something shuts down and can it be redeveloped as something else? I can answer those particular questions specifically if I know exactly what you're talking about.
Okay.
Is there any other council members that would like to, um, ask before we move on? If I can ask any questions before?
Uh, Council President?
Yes, Councilwoman, move on.
Um, I'm sorry, did another council person ask who hasn't spoken yet? I'm sorry, I.
Right, I was trying to make sure that all the council.
Oh, yeah, yeah, so very, very, very quickly, um, the consulting firm, um, I don't remember passing a resolution for them. Um, I just want to be reminded, uh, where are they located, um, Mr. Wilkinson?
Uh, yeah, so the resolution that was passed was in, uh, yet, yet this, this, this council body did pass a resolution and, um, oh, I want to say late 2018, because I think Camero's came on on, like, early 2019. Um, uh, I, I, I can get that, I can get that resolution for you. Um, so yes, Camero's is based out of Chicago, and like I mentioned, they're like one of the top zoning ordinance, zoning ordinance firms in the country, so we're really glad, glad to have gotten them. We were very excited that they even submitted a proposal to Trenton, so yeah. Um, uh, they're out of Chicago.
Okay, um, okay, and so the contract, okay, so, um, all right, so I, I, I'm going to pull that, um, resolution. Do you remember the value of the contract? Have, have they fully drawn down on it?
I don't remember the value, um, no, I, I can't say. And no, I mean, we're still in, like I, like I mentioned, we're still in the early phases of the project. Uh, we just, we just released the, the first draft, um, although it's been, what, three years we've been into this, into this project? Um, and so now that we have a first draft out there, and I said, once we get the second, I mean, once we updated by the comments from the public, um, we'll have a second draft, and then that final draft, then after that, there'll be a final draft that comes before council. So, um, we're, we're, although we're, we've three steps in, um, we can, I mean, the last few steps is a little bit more, um, quicker in nature.
Oh, and, and one last thing, um, I know you talked about the transportation and the parking. Um, what about the parks? Did I miss something? Did you guys take a view of the parks in the city of Trenton?
So yeah, there was an open space district that, that indicates all of our parks within the city. Um, so they kind of like, um, memorializes all of our parks where, you know, it's, you know, so that there isn't any development on the open space parks.
Oh, oh, open public spaces?
Open space, yeah.
Yeah, okay, very, very well, thank you.
All right, thank you for coming, um, Mr. Wilkinson. Uh, we appreciate you, Mr. Wilkinson. We appreciate you and the consultant, and I thank you for, uh, taking the questions. And, um, Mr. Colin, um, we would like to, uh, continue.
As President, I'd just like to go over the ordinances for public hearing real quick. Uh, first, we have ordinance 21-031. Uh, this is an ordinance amending the city Trenton's code, Article 8, Section 2.59. Hold on, let me just, uh, blow that up a little bit. Article 8, Section 2.59, Establishment, Fire Director, Section 2-60, Responsibilities of the Fire Department, Section 2-2.61, Authority of the Fire Director, and Section 2.62, Responsibilities of the Deputy Chief. Uh, this would be second read in public hearing. This must be called by roll call, uh, and there are the votes in the first time around. Uh, next, we're going to have, uh, for public hearing, uh, a ordinance 21-32. This is an ordinance amending Section 2-29, Redevelopment Functions in Section 2-1, City Council of the City of Trenton Code. Uh, there are the initial votes. Uh, next, we're going to have ordinance 21-033. This is county air ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits to establish cap bank pursuant to NJSA 40 cap 8, 4-45.14. As President, those would be the three ordinances for public hearing and final adoption. Uh, we have, we've already heard Resolution 21-022. First up, uh, it, next would be Resolution to the Department of Administration, Adam E. Cruz, Business Administrator. First year of Resolution 22-023, Resolution of the City Council of the City of Trenton in support of the location and operation of cannabis cultivation and manufacturing facility by Northeast Alternatives, New Jersey.
Miss, Miss, Mr. Colin, I had asked for information, um, during the, um, review.
I have not ever seen that. It would be Mr. Bridges.
Because I, I asked, I asked for who the parties were, um, that was affiliated with this application. I asked if they submitted, um, all entities in the, uh, background and the, um, I had a list of things. I don't have it in front of me, but, um, they were to, uh, submit those and attach them to the resolution, but, um, you don't, um, you didn't receive anything.
Uh, no, ma'am, you asked for information that we would normally receive on the background checks came to a liquor license. This is a marijuana license. I have not received anything, nor have I received the explanation that you asked for with regard to, uh, why there was, um, we told that it was a drop dead date of 12/31/2021.
Right.
And I believe you.
Yes, and I had asked them, right, I had asked them to provide the, I had asked them to provide the, um, information stating that the state had extended this application because we were told that this particular, um, application deadline was December the 31st. And so when the administration placed it back on, I needed to see in writing where the state had actually given that extension. So I had asked for that, but I had also asked for the actual individuals that we would be co-signing for. Um, to me, um, I, I felt as though if, uh, you're going to put a resolution up and ask for an endorsement from the council, then you need to put the proper information up, um, attached to that resolution. Who are the parties? Um, uh, what, what is their financial, uh, uh, statements as far as, um, contributions to, uh, anyone in the city? Um, just a, 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 a list of things that should have been attached to the resolution that weren't. All righty, and, um, you have not received that, so, um, all right, I'm just, I just wanted to, uh, know whether you received it or not, and you have it, so we can move on. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this? Yes, go right ahead.
I believe that when we discuss the ordinance, it stated clearly that council was gonna get recommendations from a cannabis, local cannabis commission that was supposed to be revising all these applications and then bringing the, the ones that they felt that should be approved to us. You know, uh, uh, what I see here, I believe we are giving preference to a specific, uh, specific group or company, um, because we should be getting a bunch of them, not just one or two. So this, this is like giving preference to certain groups and excluding the rest of the people that are waiting to apply because they still, still, the state have not clarified the process yet. It's still lingering, you know, and they, what this does is give preference to certain groups, you know, and I, you don't believe that we should do that, and I believe that we should check the ordinance and go by what the ordinance says and not by, you know, by whatever somebody else wants. Uh, this is my comment. Now, we should roll for it, uh, to get, uh, our attorney to revise the ordinance and give us an opinion by Friday, by, uh, Thursday, by Thursday. Uh, if not, we might have to table this resolution because it is contrary to what the ordinance says, I believe, you know. I am not, uh, I don't have it in front of me, but I believe we discussed that area that a commission, a local commission was going to be formed to take care of these applications and whoever to recommend to council. Uh, it's not coming from council. So that's have to be clarified. Uh, I believe if, if our attorney could take care of that.
Yeah, thank you. Mr., that was for Mr. Colosi.
Uh, yes, yes. So trying to hold on this, we should be, make sure that this is the correct process.
Thank you.
Uh, Council President?
Yes, go right ahead.
Council President? Well, I agree, I agree, can you hear me? I agree 100% with Councilman Rodriguez on this topic. And I think, and, and of course, I, um, concur with some of your questions as well. Um, uh, yeah, so I did, uh, ask the, the city attorney as well, and I think the onus is on him, not necessarily council attorney. The city attorney, Mr. Bridges, um, should look at that ordinance, and it is a provision, as Council Rodriguez referenced, in the, um, cannabis ordinance that the council passed several months back, that states clearly that there is a vetting pro- process for applicants, um, and it's a competitive, um, affair and open process. So, um, I'm not going to restate Councilman Rodriguez's statement, but at the end of the day, it is giving preference to some organization. And they're circumventing the process that is the law now in the city of Trenton for that ordinance. And in that ordinance, Mr. Bridges was, 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 um, wrote the ordinance, and he presented it to the city. And the ordinance, we, we passed it, and it clearly states that we must put a commission in place that one of the purposes, uh, is to vet the candidate, the applicant. So how is it that this got placed on a docket? And I want to know who introduced this ordinance and who placed it on a docket? Who introduced this, 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 um, organization? Could I ask, Council President? Who introduced this?
Mr. Bridges, I assume.
The law director?
Yes, ma'am, he came from the administration.
So, so, but I want to know who, who in, in the administration?
I believe it was Mr. Bridges.
Okay, is Mr. Bridges on the line?
Yes, he is.
Yes, I'm on the line.
Now, Mr. Bridges, you introduce, you wrote the cannabis ordinance, so now you introduce this, this company, you know that there is a provision there for the vetting and for the cannabis commission to, um, to be established and created in the city of Trenton, whereby, you, I think the commission is supposed to consist of seven people, two members from council, a couple of people from the planning board, uh, the, the mayor gets to select the person to sit on that commission. Now, why haven't you put up the ordinance yet to create that commission before you introduce a company on this docket?
Well, the commission's created. The commission was created when that ordinance was passed, and you are correct. There are several members of that commission, members from each ward, council, mayor is designated, police director is designated, and, um, and, and both you and Councilman Santiago are corrected that that committee needs to be placed together. Um, it has not, uh, and, and I need to do that, and I'll take responsibility for that. Um, with respect to the preferential treatment, uh, you may recall that this is not the first entity that we've attempted to, um, have before this council for consideration. I can name three off the top of my head that were, um, not considered and taken off the docket for several reasons. Um, so, so it's not as though this is the only cannabis operation that has come before this council. However, I do, uh, I, I do, uh, take responsibility for that committee. I will send the email out to council tomorrow, asking, uh, when this council would be available. I've already had conversations with the administration with respect to who is, whether it be the mayor, his designated, business administrator, his designated, um, so that committee, that committee has not yet been put in place. But as we get these, I don't, and understand, I don't endorse any of these entities. As these entities come to, to, before this administration, looking for the support of council, I, I send all of them in the normal. looking for the support of council, I, I send all of them in the normal course. Um, as I discussed at the last meeting, I do know that this, uh, this entity specifically reached out to this governing body directly, not through me, not through the administration.
Okay, okay, okay. I'm not asking that.
Uh, Bob, hold on, hold on, Jack. Nope, so they, they, they reached out.
No, no, I, you answered my question.
They reached out to, to have a meeting.
You answered my question.
They, I know, but I'm not done. I know, but I'm not done. I'm not done talking.
Uh, you answered my question. Is my, is it, I had the floor, Mr. Bridges?
I know, but I, I have to finish my question.
But I'm done. You did answer my question. I answered, you answered my question.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bridges. So, um, I would like to, I agree with Councilman Rodriguez. I would like to move the table this until the commission is in place. Thank you.
Yeah, that will have to take.
Council President?
Yeah, that will have to take place on, um, on Thursday. Um, and in the meantime, uh, uh, Mr. Mr. Colin, where's the list? Can you, do you have the list that, um, I asked for on, uh, Thursday? Do you have that, your, your, um, in your handwritten notes?
Uh, just give me one second. Let me take a look at my notes.
So, so because what, what, um, I hear the, the Councilman Rodriguez loud and clear in reference to the, um, the, uh, committee that's, uh, that should have been formed, but also the, in that committee, the vetting process, the questions that I put forth to the administration were simple vetting, uh, process questions. First of all, the state had a hard deadline. And I asked the administration on Thursday, give me something from the state showing that they extended their deadline. That has not been submitted, uh, to the clerk's office. Then I asked for the, uh, the actual individuals that are affiliated with this particular resolution. Who are they? Um, they're asking us for an endorsement, and we don't even know who we're endorsing. So, I can't, for some reason or another, I can't hear you, Mr. Colin.
Uh, no, that was somebody else, ma'am. That was, uh, muted them. Uh, you would ask to know who all the principals and, uh, a- a- and anyone holding an economic interest, in other words, all of the financial stakeholders, so whoever's out front is the front man, and then all the financial stakeholders or whatever entity is in the background. You also asked for the extension from the state or to know whether any resolution has been forwarded or, or any application has already been forwarded to the state and is awaiting, just, is it just awaiting council approval? Uh, you would also ask, uh, in addition to knowing the fiduciary and the, uh, and, and the background members, uh, you wanted, uh, to know if there were background checks done on any of the people who were, uh, on the application. Uh, and then, um, I still haven't found my notes. I'm, I'm actually, uh, doing this from, uh, memory, uh, but, uh, in addition to the principals, uh, and the background information you wanted to know, because, uh, you wanted to know why the hard deadline was stated for twelve thirty one. Uh, and now that, why is it being extended? Why are they uh, actually asking you to reconsider this after in December? They said if you don't consider this by twelve thirty one, it's dead. Uh, that's actually the extent of it.
Alrighty, thank you. Um, Councilman.
Council President?
Yes, go right ahead.
Yes.
Go right ahead, Council.
Um, Mr. West Bridges, I would like you to finish what you're saying. I got in, not hear what you said. Could you finish your comment?
I know, I, I was by and large done. I mean, they did, the council, both, both the councilwoman and councilman's statement with respect to me i- is accurate. It's very clear in there. I, I, I did, uh, write it, so I, I, I know it's in there. Um, and again, we've been contacted by several companies expressing the sense of urgency with respect to their application process with this, um, with, with the state. And, um, I, I do have some clarification on the answer about the hardened deadline. That deadline is still set, but there are, there are some rolling options for that that, that, um, was expressed to me. Um, so, so, you know, I look, I think the, the, the biggest part of this, I, I wanna work to try to actually get something done. I don't want to be confrontational, have these accusatory finger pointing. Well, like I said before, I take responsibility for the committee. I will, um, uh, have a sense of urgency this week to reach out to the council members and reach out to the administration. I would just ask respectfully that when I reach out to you in the spirit of cooperation, the spirit of trying to bring these cannabis operations to the city for the revenue redevelopment that it could bring, that, um, it, it, it's met with understanding ears, and it's met with ears that are gonna be, um, helpful and productive and not, uh, obstreperous. So I, I will work to get all those answers to you guys. And I would just ask in return that we have the, uh, you know, an open dialogue back and forth to get as many of these operations in the city as possible. Yes, I want every single one of these entities to get this council support, not because I know any of them, because I don't. Not because I have a pecuniary interest, because none of, none of us do. I simply want us to work together to bring this vital piece of legislation to a head so that the city and the city residents can take care of the two percent tax that we're gonna get with this, as well as the redevelopment. So I will, um, I'm happy to work with Council President, Vice President, Mr. Harrison, Ms. Boba Vaughn, Ms. Mr. Santiago, whoever we need to, to get this through. I, I'm, I'm, I'm very much tired of coming up with reasons why we can't get stuff done. I'd like to come up with reasons why we can get stuff done. So I will work with each of you to get all that information to you, and hopefully we can start to have some development in this area. So that, that's simply all I was trying to say.
Thank you, Mr. Bridges, and I agree with you all. I agree we should work together. Thank you so much.
Go right ahead.
Council President?
Councilwoman Wilson.
Yes. I just wanna say, um, one thing, you know, look, I'm for good governance. And I'm for redevelopment as well, and I wanna see the, the city of Trenton return to prosperity and physical health. And I want good businesses to come to this city. And the only way we can identify good businesses is that we follow the law. And there's a process. And when, um, we got a law in place, uh, there's a vetting process that has to happen. No company should come to Trenton and think that they can go to the law director and get on the docket and get a business set up in Trenton. Redevelopment goes through Mr. Daniels right now. And then, once we establish in the council, which is the redevelopment agency. So the process should have been, uh, company, we're gonna direct you to the right processes in the city of Trenton. And that is not through the law director. So I just want to clarify that that, uh, any economic opportunities, um, in the city must go through the, the, uh, Economic Development Department and/or the redevelopment agency of the city of Trenton, which is the council first and foremost. There's a vetting process, the laws are on the books, we gotta follow the law. And no circumstances that the law director be facilitating economic development or any contracts in the city, which by the Faulkner Act is, is, is to the mayor. The mayor is the only authority in the city that can tr- contract. So I don't understand what Mr. Bridges is talking about. So we, we, we follow the law in the city of Trenton. That's all I have to say, Council President. Thank you.
Council President, may I, may I respond to that, please?
No, no, we're not. We're gonna move on. Uh, Mr. Colin, could you move on to the next, um, to the next resolution?
Okay, Madam President, what are we gonna do with this?
Um, this. No, no, no. If, um, first of all, they haven't produced anything, and so you, and so because the, the vetting process hasn't been done on Tuesday, on Thursday, you can table it. You can make a motion to table.
Okay, thank you.
Um, Mr. Colin, we may continue.
Yes, ma'am. Next, we have resolution twenty two dash oh twenty four, resolution awarding contract in a fair and open process. In accordance with NJ SA nineteen colon forty four cap eight dash twenty point four, add sec to Edmonds GovTech to provide application software support and maintenance for the Edmonds and Associates Financial Package HW Pervasive SQL Three and MCSJ, MCSAX, SBX, UA system upgrades in an amount not to exceed twenty four thousand nine hundred and thirty six dollars and thirty cents for a period of one year from January first, twenty twenty two to December thirty first, twenty twenty two, through RFP twenty twenty one dash forty eight.
If there's no questions, um, to twenty two dash zero twenty four, um, it can be part of the consent agenda.
Yes, ma'am. Next, we have resolution twenty two dash oh twenty five. This is a resolution accepting a bid. An award in contract to J Three Electronics Incorporated, twenty five, three, five, nine, Mount Pleasant Road, Columbus, New Jersey, oh eight, oh two two, for the repair of burglar alarm, closed circuit TV and access control systems installation and maintenance from the time of award until December thirty first, twenty twenty three, in an amount not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars, fifty thousand dollars per year through bid twenty twenty one dash seventy one.
And so this is, um, yes, go right ahead, Councilwoman Colwell-Wolson.
Yeah, I'm a, I'm a little confused that this, this, this award is through December twenty twenty three, um, at fifty per year. So you're saying that this contract was supposed to start, um, January first? Mr. Cruz?
Um, Madam President, if I may?
Yes, go right ahead. Uh, Mr. Cruz.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. I am actually looking at the, at the backup documentation. Uh, it should be a one-year contract. Uh, uh, and, hold on, let me just look at the, at the backup. It should, it should, it should only be, right, it should only be until December twenty twenty second. I believe the, the heading on the, on the agenda, uh, may have, um,
But it actually states two years, fifty thousand per year, so it's not a typo. It's actually, it states right there, fifty thousand per year.
Mr. Colin?
Right, so.
But, that, I was gonna ask, because it states not to exceed a hundred thousand at fifty thousand per year. But if this is a, if, if this is supposed to be a one-year contract, then that should be fifty thousand.
I'm very confused. If you go down, if you go down to your first whereas, Councilwoman, did you look into that on your first whereas?
So the, the, the transition, uh, the transition year, um, uh, December, uh, it goes until December, uh, um, hold on one second. I'm looking at the memo that was sent to me, um, from, uh, Joe Rivera. The one year is from January first, twenty twenty, uh, second to December thirty first, uh, twenty, uh, twenty twenty two, and then there is a second year, uh, for January of twenty twenty three to December.
Yeah, but we can't, Mr. 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 Cruz, I'm looking at this, and if they, they have the option for a two, to extend to two years, you can approve the full two-year contract amount. You can only approve the, the one year with the option to extend for another year. And you bring it back for the fifty thousand dollars to extend it.
What I will do is, uh, Madam President, I can, I'm gonna have this conversation with, uh, Joey. I'm not sure if he's on the line, uh, today to discuss this. Uh, Joey Rivera, are you here? Uh, I don't, I don't think he is. So, uh, what I'll do, Madam President, is, um, we can make the correction for the next, uh, council meeting, or at least, uh, um, uh, if I need to pull it, I will pull it, uh, tomorrow morning if necessary uh, for then, for then, for the next meeting, uh, in February.
Thank you, Mr. Cruz.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Colin, you may continue.
Yes, ma'am. Next, we have, uh, uh, just, just the status that Adam, are you gonna send me amended, or are we gonna, I'm sorry, are we pulling it? Did you say?
Yes, no, yes, I need to make the clarification with purchasing first thing tomorrow morning. And then I will, um, make the necessary change if necessary. If I'm not satisfied, then I will pull it, uh, tomorrow as well.
So you're Council President, so you wanna allow the substitution? I don't have a problem. It's not a problem for me.
Yes, it, it's supposed to be a one. Yeah, it's, it's, it's supposed to be a one year with an option for a second. So the way this thing is written is a little complicated.
I got you. Okay, so we'll talk about it tomorrow.
Yes.
Okay, good enough. Uh, Council President, you want to proceed?
Please.
Yeah, this is resolution twenty two dash oh twenty six, a resolution authorizing contract to incite public sector for citizen mass notification system to send weather alerts and other important notifications to keep the citizens of Trenton informed for a period of one year from February one, twenty twenty two to January thirty one, twenty twenty three, through New Jersey State Contract Number T dash three, one, two, one, two, zero, dash, T E L E, zero, one, five, one, two, in an amount not to exceed twenty three thousand seven hundred and eleven dollars and eighty-five cents.
If, um, the council doesn't have any questions, we'll move that to the consent agenda.
Yes, ma'am. Next, we have resolution twenty two dash oh twenty seven. This is a resolution authorizing an additional three-month contract extension to Trenton Animal Rock to continue to provide animal welfare services from January first, twenty twenty two to March thirty first, twenty twenty two, in an amount not to exceed ninety three thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars at thirty one thousand three hundred and ten dollars per month through RFP twenty twenty one dash twenty seven.
I have questions. Hello?
This, this, yes, this will be, this will be a little.
Roll call. Uh, Council President, do you, do I have a question?
Yes, I, yes, yes, I already said roll call.
Okay, so I have a question regarding this, 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 uh, contract. Relate, it's related to the previous, uh, you know. So this contract expired at December thirty first, twenty twenty one, correct? And so now they're asking for an extension. Is that permissible under the New Jersey Local Contracts Law? I don't believe it is. Uh, Mr. Mr. Uh, Mr. Mr. Bridges, I mean, not Mr. Bridges, uh, Mr. Um, the business administrator, please, Mr. Cruz?
Uh, yes, I am, um.
Okay, so, um, we just discussed, uh, you know, contract extensions, and I mean, you know, um, I, you know, so what is the process here? What are we doing with this particular organization? And, um, can we legally extend in this manner?
You're asking me this one? I'm sorry.
I'm asking Mr. Cruz, the business administrator, first.
Oh, okay.
Can we, can we extend in this manner?
Uh, yes, with the permission of the municipal council, the answer is yes. And this is why we're coming in front of it.
No, 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 no.
But you're, you're asking me a question. You're asking me a question, whether you agree with it or not. That's my answer.
No, all right, okay, I just asked legally, but we just said.
I'm not an attorney. I cannot give you legal advice.
Okay, I, then I'll get to the, it's, well, you are the business administrator, and you know that contracts are pursuant not to the council, pursuant to the New Jersey Local Contracts Law. So every single contract on this docket tonight, whether it's a resolution form or ordinance form, it's pursuant to our state law. And if you're telling me that coming to the council is the ultimate, um, uh, uh, compliance, then, uh, then, then, you don't deserve to be running our city in your capacity. So if I have to go to an attorney to, to tell us what a process is for a contract, then, you know, this is just preposterous. But anyway, Mr. Cologi, um, can you, uh, 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 I mean, I know the law, so about New Jersey Local Contracts Law, and it's not pursuant. I mean, this is definitely not, you can't just extend animal, any contract in this manner. So, Mr. Cologi, can you, uh, whatever legal advice we can get, either from the law director or Mr. Cologi, please. Thank you. Mr. Cologi, can you expound, please?
Yeah, I have to apologize, Ms. Vaughn. I thought we were referring to a different resolution, which I've been researching and working with Ms. Samuel on. This was another one-year extension. I have not looked at this specific resolution regarding the animal, uh, control facility. Uh, I'll certainly be happy to do so and get back with the answer.
Yeah, yeah, please do. Please do. So, yes. Yes, and you know, since I, I just wanna say very quick, since I've been on council, you know, it, it's been very clear that we cannot extend in this manner, that once a contract is expired, we have to go out to bid, unless there is an emergency contract. Um, as we did with MPS. So, you know, Mr. Cruz, again, is being disingenuous. So I would just, uh, roll call this, Council President, and I won't be voting for this, cuz I know it's not compliant with New Jersey Contracts Law. So, um, and that's all I have to say about that. Thank you.
Madam President, I'd like to reply.
Mr. Cruz, we're not gonna go back and forth. We, we do understand. Um, Mr. Cologi is going to get us the law, and then we will base our decision. is going to get us the law, and then we will base our decision on his legal opinion. Um, Mister, Mister Conlon, um.
Madam President?
Uh, Mister.
Yes, Mister, yes, um, Councilman Rodriguez.
I have a question, because the twenty-two zero two eight, the resolution rejecting the proposal for, uh, the animal welfare services, uh, this issue have been, uh, in the papers, all over the internet for the past couple of weeks.
But we're still on, we're still on twenty-two oh twenty-seven. You wanna move forward?
I believe that, that the order, the order of the resolutions is to be inverted somehow. It's just very confusing there.
So you feel as though that they should be reversed? You think twenty-two zero two eight should be, uh, uh, in a new, in the chronological order of twenty twenty seven, twenty, uh, twenty-two oh twenty-seven is what you're saying? It should be, uh, vice versa?
It, it, it is, because then we're gonna get stuck, we're gonna vote something. Before, uh, you know.
Before we reject it.
What contract are we referring to in the twenty-two oh two seven?
So, if you want, I can, Adam, if, 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 Council President, if you want, I or Adam can explain the difference, if you want.
Uh, yes, Madam President, ma'am.
He's, he, he's, he's asking you about the, the order. He's saying that.
Right, I, I, I did.
Explanation, he got the explanation. He wanted to know about the, how it's numbered. He's saying that.
Yeah, that, I was actually the one that, that did.
Should, should, should come before, uh, 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 oh twenty-seven, is what he's saying. He said he thinks that they numbered wrong.
I was the one that determined the order, so I'd be happy to answer the question, if you want.
Councilman Rodriguez, would you like to hear from Mister Colin?
Well, yes, because, you know, it's confusing. What contract they are referring to?
So I did the order this way. This is the existing contract, and this would extend the existing contract. Uh, this is a contract that actually is in existence, uh, right now. Uh, this contract here does not yet exist. This contract, okay, oops, sorry about that. Uh, this, this contract here is not, does not yet exist. They're rejecting the bid for, because the bid exceeded the cost analysis of what they wanted to spend. This is actually the existing contract, uh, from the old bid, and this is an extension. Whether the extension is legal or not, I'm not gonna speak to that.
Can you show it?
Yeah, so this is the, this is the extension for the existing contract for the existing bid, and this is for bid RFP twenty twenty-one dash twenty-seven. Uh, this one here is for RFP twenty twenty-one dash fifty-three. It's a different RFP, it's a different contract. The contract is not executed, the bid hasn't been accepted. Uh, the reason why is, uh, uh, Dr. Lopez's, uh, area rejected the bid because they had believed it would cost a certain amount. The lowest bid came in far in excess, and that, I believe, is one of the bid rules, that you can reject it if it far exceeds your specifications. So they're two separate issues that are, you know, related, because they would cover the same service, uh, but one is an existing contract, the other is a non-existent contract. Ergo, it doesn't really matter what order they come in, they're not the same item, so we're not replacing one or.
But Mister Colin, what I'm saying is that we don't have a contract with the animal charity, with, with, with that contractor, because it expires in December.
Right, so this, this, this one would be the, the extension of that contract, uh, and then this one would be the rejection of the bid. So it, it, you know, I, I, I'm, if, if I'm incorrect, Mister Koloji, you can correct me, but I don't think it particularly matters in this case, uh, as they're not the same item, which particular order these come in. Uh, but that's, I'll, I'll let Mister Koloji and Mister Cruz speak to that.
Yeah, uh, Madam President, if the concern of the council is, is that this is a matter where you, you, that you feel that this, this contract expired, don't forget the services were being provided, we were in the process of, of, um, advertising, we bitted it out, we received this, uh, we received the, um, the proposals, we, uh, we then proceeded to, uh, to have conversations, uh, with, uh, you know, within the department, uh, finance, DCA, uh, we came to the, we came to the conclusion that we needed to, in order for us to continue moving forward, we needed to extend at least for another three months to give us the opportunity to then put it out to bid again, so that we can, uh, advertise, bring another proposal in, and have it ready hopefully before the end of March, so that we can award a contract for, again, another, uh, year or two. So this is why we were asking for an extension. Um, so if, if, if the council feels that in a, in any way that perhaps this should be considered at, um, an emergency, uh, contract for three months, it, it doesn't make a difference to me. If, 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 if you, if you feel more comfortable, I can amend this resolution tomorrow and, and have in front of you for Thursday, an emergency contract for three months from January first to March thirty-first. It, I'll do, you know.
That will avoid the, the doubt of his, his legal, like Ms. Vaughn's question. If it could be considered an emergency contract, which I believe it is now, because we don't have, you know, we can't, you know, we don't have anybody to take over those services, that's the way it should be written, uh, I believe. I don't know if anybody else objects to that.
Mister Cruz, I don't have a problem putting emergency contracts on there.
Okay, so then we will, we will make the, we will make the, uh, the adjustment tomorrow, and we will present it to council, uh, the resolution we presented as an emergency contract for three months, uh, uh, for the, for the Thursday vote.
Yeah, and, and Adam, I sent, uh, John, John, uh, the updated voting block to just make sure that they use.
Oh, perfect. Okay, all right, thank you.
Can you continue, Mister Conlon?
Okay, so we're gonna consider this one for amendment. It was roll called, though, so whenever amendment comes up, will be roll called. Uh, if it's an emergency contract, it does anyway. Um.
Yes.
Next is resolution twenty-two dash zero two eight. This is a resolution rejecting proposal received for animal welfare services for the Department of Health and Human Services, Division of Animal Control. The sole proposal received substantially exceeds the contracting unit's appropriation for goods and services through RFP twenty twenty-one dash fifty-three.
Uh, I, I have a question, uh, on that. Madam President?
Go right ahead.
I.
Yes, the, uh, was this proposal consorted with the, with the provider to see if they would go down in the amount that they were asking for?
Well, I think that's what the, the new RFP will, will do. It will bring the, the, it will bring the number down based on how they put the scope of work out. Am I correct, Mister Cruz?
Uh, Madam President, we will be making, uh, we will be making adjustments to the technical specifications to see if somehow we can, uh, we can get, uh, uh, the prospective bidders, uh, to, um, yes, to bring down the prices. That is correct.
Uh, Council President?
Yes, go right ahead, Councilwoman Vaughn.
Is Doctor Lopez on the line?
Yes, she is.
Council President, may I speak? I'm, I'm present.
Yes, thank you. Um, I just have a quick question regarding the services that Animal Rocks, this organization's providing, your department, um, the Trenton Animal Shelter. So, um, do we have sufficient resources in-house, um, employees of the Trenton Animal Shelter that can perform the services that you have now outsourced to Animal Rocks? So why is it that the city of Trenton even, we have resources, professional, certified, licensed, animal control officers and employees under your purview, under, that being, uh, funded by the taxpayers of the city of Trenton, why are, are these services duplicated? And why can't we use this money going, you know, instead of investing in a, in outsourcing this service, why don't we build out your department and, you know, as part of your budget, instead of going outside the city for, for this so, service that appears to be redundant, in my opinion? So, uh, Mister, I mean, Mrs. Lopez, can you, um, expound on that?
Council President, may I speak?
Yes, go right ahead, Doctor Lopez.
Okay, great. Uh, Councilwoman Vaughn, um, this content, well, this resolution is for animal welfare services, so it's totally different from our animal control officers. They respond to animal, um, cruelty cases along with the Trenton, um, law enforcement, human, humane law enforcement officers, um, with animal cruelty cases, where there may be, uh, um, animals who may be, um, you know, un, unaccounted for, they're running loose in this, in the city, things of that nature. So animal, so Trenton Animal Rock is a valuable asset, and I'm speaking specifically for Trenton Animal Rock, because this is who is rendering the animal welfare services to us. Um, and they have been helping out specifically with animal welfare services, helping out with our adoptions, helping out with our, uh, vacs, vaccinations of our animals, rescues, and just looking at the intakes. I, I can tell you, in twenty twenty, a total intake for, uh, dogs and cats was two hundred and ninety-five, right? And looking at from July to December of twenty twenty-two, um, I mean, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm jumping here, July to December of twenty twenty-one, we have two hundred and thirty-five, and that's just in six months. Show, it shows the increase of the number of animals that we are servicing. So to answer your question, no, we do not have the staff that are equipped to handle the animal welfare services, um, uh, at this time, uh, to, and so utilizing Trenton Animal Rock to help in that specification is greatly needed. Um, we can add more money to the budget, but as you know, we are, um, having some fiscal concerns, uh, right now with the city, um, uh, bringing in additional staff and doing the work. I have six ACOs, animal control officers. Um, that's not enough to respond to the calls. Again, as, as I spoke, um, just briefly, from July to December, two hundred and thirty-five, that intake of dogs and cats that we, um, have, um, dealt with, I mean, I'm sorry, two hundred and thirty-five dogs and one hundred and fifty cats. So that's in six months' time. And if we look back in the previous year, we had a total of two hundred and ninety-five with dogs and cats combined. So there's an influx. And so we do rely on Trenton Animal Rock, or if it's not Trenton Animal Rock, as we do the, we work our specifications for, um, another bid, then whoever it is to render those animal welfare services is gonna be greatly needed at this time, um, because we have so much that's going on with our animals, with our dogs and cats, and other things. We have, we get calls for raccoons, we get called for, um, coyotes, um, we get calls, they're out there, and, and deers and, and concerns like that. So my animal control officers do respond to all of that as well. So that's their focus. And so then when you're talking about all the necessary animal, uh, welfare services for, uh, vaccines, for their medical care, um, adoption services, for them to be sprayed and neutered, and rabies, uh, clinics, we just had one on January the thirtieth, and we had seventy-seven animals that was vaccinated, thanks to TAR assisting in this. And I'm not trying to beef them up, but again, this is the agency that assisted us through animal welfare services, so they are valuable. We do need that. Um, and so we're hoping that City Council could, you know, really look at this and expand, and hopefully we can, um, have this, uh, this three months extended, and then look at, um, at the resolution and having, um, uh, another bid out and vote another animal welfare service agency in, or if TAR is, um, uh, another, uh, reworked the specifications, or however that may be, but it is greatly needed at this juncture.
Right, well, okay, I would just say, I would just say this to, uh, council, my council members and the whole city of Trenton, and, and the, and the public that's on the line tonight. I don't believe in outsourcing, um, services of the city. Um, I'm sure TARs do a great job in what they do, but they do not replace our department, our government, the Department of Health and Human Services, and our animal control unit. These u, these services are funded by the taxpayers of the city, and we al, we are also paying for this contract. So when you talk about the budget, this is in the budget. So it doesn't make sense for the taxpayers to pay a, a, a TARs when we, we can use that money to build up internally in our city. Otherwise, we're gonna perpetually be paying TARs. And they're outside entity, a private organization whereby the taxpayers, we have City Hall and the city of Trenton, that can, we have the capability to build up our, um, our infrastructure to be able to pro, provide these services. So I, I, this contract is gonna be short-term. Um, I would not support it beyond, uh, March the thirtieth, first. So, uh, I would advise the, the mayor and Mister, I mean, Mrs. Lopez, to get their act together and, uh, start recruiting, uh, internally, um, the professionals that's needed, so that the, that department, uh, uh, our division, our Trenton, uh, animal shelter can provide those services, because at one time, we did. Animal Rocks, I don't know, they just came on board. So what did we do previously? Uh, uh, Ms. Lopez, you have to think about that. For many, many years, Trenton Animal Shelter, no, no, I'm talking, Trenton Animal Shelter, before you even came on board, uh, 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 provided all those, uh, animal welfare services, all of them. So when a skunk was in front of my yard, it was Trenton Animal Shelter who came out and took care of it, not Animal Rocks. So, and that was, and that predates you, uh, Mrs. Lopez. So I just want, uh, the city of Trenton to know that I'm for insourcing, I'm not for outsourcing every to contracts of this. Uh, it's very expensive to do that, and it's a waste of taxpayer dollars when we have that expertise already identified by law. Government provides that services, not some nonprofit organization. Thank you, Council President.
Council President, can I just expand this one thing? Because I did hear Councilwoman Vaughn note that raccoons in front of our house, that's what the ACOs respond to, that's not an animal welfare service. What's going, yes, that's still.
Again, we don't, we don't need a nonprofit to provide government services, okay?
Right.
Stop outsourcing our department. Stop outsourcing our city.
Um, point of order, Councilwoman Vaughn.
Taxpayer dollars.
Council President? Yes. So, um, I, I.
Council President, may I speak?
Yes, go right ahead, Councilwoman.
Yeah, so Trenton Animal Shelter used to be a kill shelter. It is now a no-kill shelter. The volume has increased. They can't put these animals down unless they are seriously, seriously ill. We don't have the expertise, I don't believe, in City Hall and city government to deal with animal welfare and, and medical practices with these animals. We have, we only have six animal control officers, which is still not enough to be able to do the job that they have to do. And yes, nonprofits do sometimes serve a good purpose, because they come with the one intention and expertise that we need in that area. So I don't, I don't know what the beef is with the councilwoman about Trenton Animal Rocks, who has saved hundreds of animals, to the delight of all the animal lovers in, not only in this city, but in this county. And they have been the beneficiary of animals that are being abandoned, not only by city residents, but others that we can't identify, because these animals are not chipped. So their goal is to find homes for these animals, and when they do, these animals get chipped, they get spayed, they get neutered, so that we don't have them running around the streets, impregnating other animals, and they can check the chip to find out who the owners are and hold them responsible. So I think we need to work with Doctor Lopez on this issue, and we need to work with Trenton Animal Rocks to make this a better shelter, so that we don't run into these serious health issues in the community with animals. Thank you.
So I, I had just wanted to highlight something, because I think a lot of, I, I think that is something, um, there's a component here that haven't been, uh, haven't been discussed this evening. So, uh, last year, it might have been the end of, uh, twenty twenty. I, I came to, uh, Mister Cruz, I believe it was Mister Cruz, and, um, I had shared with Mister Cruz, um, that the Animal Rock organization, when they, they came on and they were, uh, doing the service for, for our animals, but they were using our employees. They didn't have their own employees, they were using Trenton's employees. Not only were they using Trenton's employees, but they were. Not only were they using Trenton's employees, but they were paying Trenton employees through PayPal. I bought, I took the receipts to my council colleagues, and I took those receipts also to the administration. And the problem that I had with that is that it was totally, totally illegal. They were paying our employees to work for Trenton, for Animal Rocks, through PayPal. They weren't taking out any local, county, state, or federal taxes, nor were they paying toward the pension. And I had a problem with that. And I get that animals need to be taken care of, but we need to reassess the situation here. If we have Animal Rocks on our staff and they're using our employees to get the work done, something is wrong with that picture. And have they stopped paying them through PayPal? But no one is talking about the elephant in the room. We're talking about animals. Yes, we know that the animals need treatment. We know that we have a lot of strays left on the streets. But when we are hiring outside organizations, we have to make sure that they are above board. Now, everybody received those receipts. The workers turned them in. But no one is talking about that. We should be having a serious conversation about the fact that Animal Rocks is hiring our own employees. It makes no sense. But here we are again, acting as if that doesn't matter. Laws are being violated, but it doesn't matter. It matters, and so we should address that. We should address how Animal Rocks can stay on. Who are their employees? How are they paying them? I don't have a problem with Animal Rocks coming on and servicing, but they can't come on and use the Trenton employees to make up their staff? That doesn't go over well with me. And who is discussing the fact that they were being paid through PayPal illegally? So we need to be talking about those things. If you bring Animal Rocks back on, let them produce their staff, let them be able to at least show Dr. Lopez the number of staff that they have and how they are paying that staff. Because as much as I want them to come back on, and as much as I know that we need them, it has to be done correct. And that's where I'm at with this. Do it, if you're going to outsource this service, it has to be done correct. You cannot violate the law in order, in the name of, of "I'm helping" or in the disguise of help. It has to be done correctly. That's where I'm at with that.
Council President, Mr. Harrison?
Yes, go right ahead.
I've been to the Animal Shelter, and I see, like Councilwoman Kawa Wilson said, there's a lot of animals there. It was a kill shelter. It's not a kill shelter. And at the end of the day, there's a lot of animal lovers in this city that want to see these animals not killed. So at the end of the day, that building, I'll be honest with you, it's not, it gets big enough for the amount of animals that are there, but that's for a discussion. But at the end of the day, I've seen a lot of the work that the Trenton Animal Rocks does for this great city. So I appreciate their help. Thank you.
Council President, can I speak?
Who am I speaking to? I don't see...
This is Councilwoman Wilkins, Sonia Wilkins.
Yes, go right ahead.
I actually understand. I listened to what everyone said, and I actually understand because at one time, not too long ago, the city of Trenton Animal Shelter was a kill shelter. Once they reversed the role and changed the animal shelter from a kill shelter to a non-kill shelter, it did, in fact, increase the workload. But there was a time, and it seems as though that the roles have reversed. It used to be prior that the city of Trenton had an animal shelter manager, of course, along with the ACOs. The ACOs answer to the animal shelter manager as well as the volunteer organizations. I don't know if it was Trenton Rock back at the time, but the actual volunteer organizations would come in and do the services, the welfare services that Dr. Lopez spoke of. The city of Trenton also hired a veterinarian. We had under contract because, of course, we did not have that expertise in our purview. But what needs to be done, and I agree with Councilwoman Vaughn, is that we have to figure out a way where the city is doing more in-house services. But at the same time, if we cannot come up with a plan where they can do the services and be successful to remain a non-kill shelter, because there is good work being done there, then we have to look at creative ways where the city can be, of course, not the roles reversed, but the city, the animal shelter manager is in charge. The animal shelter manager gives direction to the volunteers or the contractors, animal control, I mean, Animal Rocks, Trenton Animal Rocks, I'm sorry. But it seems as though, and then what they, I wanted to speak on the prior information about the resolution to extend, piggyback on Councilman Rodriguez. Once they present that resolution, and the resolution should be an emergency unspecified type resolution where we get detailed information as to why we have to keep them on. But I believe at this time, we do because we have to remain a non-kill shelter. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Council President?
Yes, go right ahead.
Ms. Danielle, can you hear me? Council President, can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Oh, okay. Yeah, Danielle from Animal Rocks is on the call. If you would like her to explain anything that you were talking about, she's on the phone call. If you would like her to explain anything that you were talking about, Council President. She's on the call, Trenton Animal Rocks.
No, I don't need her to explain anything to me. I took the receipts down to the business administrator, so I don't need an explanation. I just need in going forward for them to straighten that type of business out.
Madam President, can I, this is Adam Cruz.
Yes, Mr. Cruz, I made my statement, and I was very clear on it. And hopefully, you know, you guys will get together and just make that right. If no one else has anything to say, this should be roll called based on the, based on the fact that it's a rejection. It don't have to be, but I'll ask for it to be roll called.
Yes, ma'am. That was the next question. Thank you very much. Council President, would you like me to proceed? Between the city of Trenton and Wallace Robertson Todd LLC Amendment Number One to Conduct Transit Oriented Development Area Plans.
Roll call that. Council President, roll call? And I have a question, if I am allowed to speak, Council President? Council President?
Yes, I was just reading the... Yes, I was just reading the...
Yeah, I just want to say quickly, so is this associated with, is this the economic development director that's putting this forward?
It is, ma'am.
Mr. Collins?
Yes, ma'am.
So why are we, I thought we just had a consultancy firm that's doing that work. Why are we bringing on another contractor?
I believe this is the same.
Is Mr. Daniels on the line?
Good evening. I am.
Okay, I thought we just, I just asked Jeff Wilkinson about this contract, and he said that it was passed in 2018, and they have not yet drawn down. I asked about drawing down on the monies, and now they're asking for more money? Is it the same consultancy firm that just presented the land development ordinance?
No, it isn't. This is something totally different. The city of Trenton hired qualified firm back in, let me get this date, ma'am. Resolution 21-085 to prepare and look at seven redevelopment area plans surrounding three train area, three train station areas in the downtown. Ma'am, what I will also tell you is that on the last council's docket, I had asked that this be pulled because there was some concern as to whether this could be, in fact, extended. In consultation with Sally Samuel's Assistant City Attorney and Council's Attorney, Mr. Ed Cologie, we are researching some additional documentation that will go into this. And we have, we'll be getting back together tomorrow and have this prepared adequately for Thursday's meeting.
Okay.
In the interim, I'm just asking that it stay on and it be roll called, if it is your pleasure.
Okay, very well. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Collins, you may continue. It'll be roll called. Mr. Collins?
It would probably help if I unmuted myself. This is next, Resolution 22-029, Resolution Establishing Procedure for the City Council to Consider Redevelopment Proposals of the Roebling Block Two property.
Yes, Madam President? Yes, go right ahead, Mr. Rodriguez.
My question is, why is economic development establishing procedures for city council? How is that? The first time I hear that economic development establishes procedure for, it should be the opposite, you know, not this way. For us to follow, what power, who gave them the power to do this? That's my question.
Council President?
Yes.
Through you to Councilman Rodriguez, what we're merely suggesting here is that Roebling Block Two continues to be a jewel within the city. At this particular time, we have two separate parties that are looking to develop over there. And the fullest of being inclusive and recognizing council's position relative to redevelopment, we just came up with a, if you will, performal or a list of things that particularly could happen with council's participation. Surely, ma'am, you and council have the right to alter or move on this in whichever way you deem fitting.
Madam President, can we roll call this?
Yes. Mr. Collins, roll call.
Yeah. Any other comments, questions? Council President, would you like me to move on?
Yes, please.
Next, we have Resolution 22-030, A Resolution Designating Vanessa Sullivan as Redeveloper of the property located at 651 and 653 North Clinton Avenue, Block 21701, lots 25 and 24 within the North Clinton Avenue redevelopment area, and authorizing the execution of a redevelopment agreement and an RCA grant agreement regarding the thing.
Council President?
Go right ahead.
I mean, I reviewed some of the documentation on this, and it's very concerning. This went from Babel Burke being a redeevelper on it, and then it's now this resident that live, I believe, in public housing. So we're, I don't think that this individual has the financial wherewithal to be a redeevelper of any property in the city of Trenton. And it's just unconscionable that the administration even put this up. So it went to our redevelopment attorney, and he responded with an email that was very pointed. I'm summarizing, and I can have the email, I would have Mr. Collins bring it up on Thursday, that clearly states to Julie Murray the concerns about this person's financial wherewithal and having the resources to be able to take on such a project. So I would like this roll called, and it's just, and again, a lot of these redevelopment projects that are coming to the docket, to the council, I think it's premature. I think the city of Trenton needs to build, put the structures in place to, so that investors are confident that laws are being followed and that all the interested parties vested interest are taken into account legally. To just put something on a docket and get it approved without that proper vetting, without the proper entities and institutions in place, structures in place, is just not responsible of the council nor the mayor. And that's all I have to say about that, and I won't be voting for this, but roll call it, please. And I will ask Mr. Collins, when I get that email from Mr. Hoffman, the city's redevelopment attorney, his comment about this particular identified designated redeevelper and her financial capabilities. Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes, go right ahead.
I drove by to see this building. I know exactly where, I know the area very well, as you know it. And I saw the booklet, the contractor is going to do the work for $50,000. I believe like 20, 30 years ago, with $50,000, you could have a house in Trenton. But the prices went up lately, this year, this 2021, and they are still going up. I don't think that $50,000 are going to be enough to do anything there, you know? So I don't want this lady to waste her $5,000 there and waste all her efforts, and then the contractor is going to come, and that's not a city contract. There's not, she will not be covered by that 20% change order. But the contractor is going to come back to her, the lady, and that's not enough money, and we need more money, and the job is probably one quarter done. You know, that's my only concern. If the city have been giving this lady the right advice on that, specifically on that building, have they gone and done an inspection on the building? You know, because to me, it takes a lot more than $50,000 to rehab that building. That's all I have to say.
It's already going to be roll called. The only question that I would have for the Housing and Economic Development Department is that I just want to know if there was anything else that we could have paired her up with as far as being a homeowner. I just think that the city has to have... I, I just think that the city has to have uh, 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 another remedy for this young uh, a single mother. I believe that um she uh needs a home for her children and I don't think they paired her up with the best solution for her. And so we should be talking about what other uh programs are out there to assist single parents um that do not uh fit the guidelines um as develop, as, or to be uh, to be deemed as a, a redeveloper. There should be some type of program in that Housing and Economic Development Department that she could be part uh, uh, that she could be uh introduced to or um or just uh offered some other way because this is just, I think this is a little over her uh financial um statement, her uh, her financial ability to be able to be successful in this and I would just hope that uh the, 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 uh, Mr. Daniels and his team paired her up with a program that would reflect her income. I, I think this is uh, uh, uh totally uh disadvantaged for the young lady and we don't want to see her fail. We want to see her be successful. And so I, I, I believe that there should be uh, they should have had uh some type of uh meeting about what they could do to, 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 to match up with a program that best suited her. Thank you, Mr. Colin.
Council President, if I could?
No, I, I, I just wanna move on, Mr. Daniels, if you don't mind. Mr. Colin, could we move on?
Yes ma'am. That's gonna be roll called.
Council President, I have my hand.
Mr. Harrison wanted to be heard.
We're moving on from that particular resolution and we're going on to the next resolution.
Yes ma'am.
I had my hand, I wanted to, I wanted to come on it cause I was gonna ask Mr. Daniels to elaborate cause I have a memorandum regarding this property which is near her mother's house.
Miss, uh, Mr. Mr. Harrison, we, we've moved on from that.
I know, Council. My hand was up again.
No, I did not see your hand before I spoke and we're gonna stay within the guidelines here. We're gonna move on, Mr. Colin and Mr. Harrison. Um, the floor is always yours, but um just.
Well then, uh, when I have my hand up, I should be able to see. You want to elaborate on this, give me the opportunity.
Colin.
Talk about it on Thursday.
Next we have resolution twenty-two dash zero three one, a resolution authorizing payment for a contract with Jay Vinch and Sons Inc. water demolition services in the city of Trenton for structural removal of a two wood frame structure with openings in wall areas located at three thirty-four North Montgomery Street in the amount of thirty-four thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Uh, Council President, can we roll call that? And um, uh, Mr. um, Colin?
Yes ma'am.
I don't have that, I don't have that in front of me because I'm not at my desk.
Sure.
But um, can you tell me where that contractor is located?
Uh, they are, one second. They have a P O box in Trenton, New Jersey.
Okay, uh, well, that's, well, well, I, I understand how we're accepting P O boxes in, in a contract. This is some shady, um, shadiness, shady.
They are located.
So, so what is their business?
But they, they are located.
That distance that.
One Vinch Avenue in Trenton, New Jersey, ma'am. They are a Trenton business.
One Vinch Avenue, okay. What, what, what's the name of the business again?
Jay Vinch and Sons Inc.
Oh, I, okay, I, I know who they are. Okay, no problem. Okay, thank you. Um, I, I don't need to have that roll called.
Mr. Colin, you may continue.
Uh, is that going to consent agenda, ma'am?
Yes.
As President, next we have resolution twenty-two dash oh thirty-two, a resolution approving the substantial amendment to the fiscal year twenty eighteen annual action plan beginning July first, two thousand eighteen through June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen.
Uh, Madam President?
Go right ahead, Council, uh, Rodriguez.
Allow Mr. uh, whoever is in charge of that to explain what this means because I see these three resolutions, T D B G uh monies that were allocated way back two thousand sixteen. But when I went back to the background uh paperwork, it says that some of that money was supposed to be used for uh the playgrounds and bleachers in the parks. And, you know, why don't we, why are we switching that money to the library or, you know, what, what is going on? Why is this happening that we have to go back years where we don't have the initial information of what happened, what was done with the monies? And I, I guess it's money that we have left. But why keep it, take it away from partial recreations? Like, we cannot take a penny away from partial recreation to use it to anything else. You know, I have been waiting for three years, three and a half years to get bleachers eh, 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 changed at Columbus, Columbus Park. Uh, and all over the, the parks. I have been waiting for that. We have been waiting for eh, 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 construction on Martin Luther King Boulevard. You know, and now it says that, that money that was supposed to go to those projects, it's gonna be switched out and then we're gonna get monies from some other sources for that, those projects. You know, I don't understand that. Okay, somebody explain it to me.
Council, Council President? Through you to, to, through you to Councilman um Rodriguez. I have um Farah G. who runs the Community Development Block Grant Program on the line to explain that and as a fact, as a matter of fact, um, resolutions twenty-two uh thirty-two, twenty-two thirty-three and twenty-two thirty-four would uh be in the same set of circumstances. Farah, are you on the line?
I am. Can I speak?
Yes ma'am.
Yes, go right ahead.
Okay. So Councilman Rodriguez, you are correct. Um, but we're not taking any money from the park. We're essentially uh moving, doing a budget move. Um, I don't know if you guys remember or not, but our, our federal grant funds were frozen for five years. Um, and they were finally released in December of twenty twenty, December of twenty twenty, right before COVID hit. Um, those funds from two, twenty fifteen where we allocated four hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the M L K Park development will expire this September, uh, September thirtieth of twenty twenty-two. So what we're doing is we're moving the funding from the M L K Park into a later year to give additional time for the design process and for the development of the park. Uh, I don't know if you remember, but just at the last council meeting, um, you all approved the uh resolution to start the design process. Um, so even if we went full steam ahead, we probably would not be out to bid into the summer, therefore putting at risk um, the recapture of this fund by HUD. So what we're doing is we're putting the four hundred and fifty for the M L K Park um in two thousand sixteen and two thousand eighteen to give it a little bit more time. What we're doing is we're swapping, we're just um swapping the four fifty for shovel-ready projects, projects that are already ready to go out to bid or have been out to bid and sort of moving the funding up right now and then replacing the M L K funding in a later year.
Uh, but we knew, we knew about this since two thousand twenty, right? We knew about this since two, two thousand twenty, right? And why we waited until today to bring that resolution?
So we, we do, so, so we do substantial amendments on an annual basis. Sometimes there are projects that we are waiting for them to begin and I believe that the M L K Park was one of those projects that it was gonna happen, it was gonna happen, it didn't happen and now we're running in, into jeopardy of possibly returning that four hundred and fifty thousand dollars because the M L K Park is not even gonna be out of design fees until probably this summer. So this is in an effort and an attempt to sort of move money around and just swapping the year for HUD purposes so that we can, we know that the Carver Center roof replacement is underway. We've already put it out the bid, the bids came back double. Um, some of them were triple the amount that we had budgeted for it. So we know we can get that project done and not run the risk of having to return that funding to HUD. This is a normal process. We should be doing this every year um with our uh C D B G allocations. Um, but if there's a project that we think is gonna happen and we don't wanna take the funding from it, we leave it there because we do have seven years to expend the funding. It's just because we had our funding frozen for so long and then it was released and then we went right into COVID. But that didn't stop the clock for HUD. They're still gonna recapture twenty fifteen remaining funds uh September twenty-two. They're gonna recapture uh twenty sixteen remaining funds in twenty twenty-three. They're gonna recapture twenty eighteen funds in twenty twenty-five. So either we make adjustments now to try to save that money without returning it and get the work done that we had planned or some work done or they're just gonna come in and take it and don't ask questions.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Council, uh, uh, Council President?
Yes, go right ahead, Council. Yes.
Um, COVID didn't start in December twenty twenty, it started in March twenty twenty. Um, we were coming out of it at the end of December and uh, the twenty twenty, so I just want to make that correction. So during the period of March twenty twenty, when the governor instituted his um, when the top of the pandemic and he instituted pretty much shutting down the whole state. But the interesting thing is during that period, there was no reason for the parks, anything, the parks were closed. Uh, this was the time, other towns were fully engaged uh in doing infrastructure, infrastructure upgrades to parks, to their streets, paving and so forth and so forth. So the fact that Martin Luther King Park was not upgraded during that period, uh, just, it's just, it's just un, it's just unheard of. So all the work that we could have accomplished during the period of, of COVID, Public Works Department, they're, they're in a central group. They're out on the streets every day um during, during that period. Um, and parks were shut down. So again, all this work should have been done, but not in the city of Trenton. You went out to the county and other uh municipalities, they were, they were getting it done. And here we are today talking about we gotta shuffle money around and defer projects out into two, three years from now and reallocate money to other projects that are underway when those projects that you're deferring should have been underway during the period of March twenty twenty and December twenty twenty. Wasting time doing nothing. Um, so I won't be voting for this and let HUD take it because you did nothing, you did no planning and you always wanna come to this council and uh, and, 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 and present these uh, who knows, no, nothing transparent about it. Uh, I would love to see it on paper, um, what you're doing. Uh, but nonetheless, I'd rather have, go back to HUD and give it to a town that's really doing something and just hope and pray we get a better administration and council to uh facilitate upgrading the city and taking it to um prosperity. Cause right now, this, this administration is a complete and utter failure. I have nothing more to say, uh, Council President.
Is there any other council member that would like to speak to this?
Council President?
Yes, go right ahead, Councilman uh Harrison.
Um, Mrs. G. tried to explain it to us, but now we're, we're, we're willing to give money back. I don't think that's a good idea. We need all the money we can in this city. Um, we have a lot of things that we need to address. Um, Ms. Farah G. and other city employees are working hard. Um, she's given us uh, telling us what we should be doing to move the city forward. At the end of the day, I think we maybe we should start learning a list, listen to people before we just think about just giving money away. I think it's not, doesn't do well for this city when we need money to just willing to turn money away. I don't think it benefits the people of the city at all. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other council members that would like to speak to this ordinance? Um, seeing none, uh, uh, would you uh move on, miss? Uh, it's a roll call and would you uh move to the next uh resolution, Mr. uh Colin?
Twenty-two oh thirty-two is roll called, next is twenty.
Roll call please.
As President, would you like me to proceed?
Yes, it's a roll call.
Yes ma'am. Next we have resolution twenty-two dash oh thirty-four, a resolution approving substantial amendment to the fiscal year twenty fifteen annual action plan beginning July first, twenty fifteen through June thirtieth, twenty sixteen.
Uh, um, Council President, can I just have one thing to say about this one? I know they're all related. Uh, may I have the floor, Council President?
Yes.
So the, the annual fiscal plan that, that's been amended, I just wanna be clear here. This is, this is, this is the plan that Ben Delisle, um, the former economic development um, um, officer, director presented, right? That, that the council signed off, I mean, approved. Um, Mr. Daniels, can you confirm that? That is, that is what, what they are, right? Correct? These, these, these action plans were approved under the previous director, correct?
That's correct, ma'am.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know. Thank you. And then, yes, it should be roll called.
You may continue, Mr. Mr. Colin.
Yes ma'am. Next we have resolution twenty-two dash oh thirty-five, a resolution authorizing contract to chess S. Winter Ford for the purchase of twenty, twenty twenty-two marked all-wheel-drive base vehicles to be utilized by the Patrol Bureau in the New Jersey State Contract Number T dash two seven seven six twenty dash fleet dash zero one one eight nine awarded in an amount not to exceed seven hundred and forty-four thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars.
Uh, can we roll call that? So um, uh, Mr. Colin, I'm, I'm sorry, Council President, may I speak?
Yes, go right ahead.
So, um, Mr. Colin, can you just uh clarify something for me? Again, I'm not at my desk and I can't see. Um, but um, can you tell me, these are these trucks, right?
Well, these are police, these are police vehicles, ma'am.
They're the S U Vs, right?
Uh, I believe so. Uh, let me tell you.
Is Mr., is Mr. Wilson on the line?
Yeah, Mr. Wilson can answer.
Council President?
Yes, go right ahead, Mr. Wilson.
Yes, those are the uh hybrid S U Vs.
Okay, so how many are we ordering?
Twenty.
Twenty. So um, are they for day-to-day or they're for certain um units, certain officers? Are they gonna be taken home? Like, what, what is, what is the purpose for these vehicles?
These are marked patrol vehicles gonna u- utilize day-to-day by our patrol officers.
Okay, okay. Um, are they gonna be fitted with the uh, the radios, um, the new radios?
Yes.
I'm sorry?
Yes.
Okay, uh, uh, the state radio platform?
Yes.
Or the county radio platform?
The radios that are gonna go into this will, will be uh compatible with our, our state project.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Council President.
So um, is there anyone that would like to speak to this uh resolution? Any other council members that would like to speak to this resolution? Um, if not.
Council President? Council President?
Yes, yes.
Yes, I'd like to speak. Uh, Director Wilson?
Yes, sir.
Could you uh elaborate on why these vehicles are needed?
Um, these, these vehicles are needed uh to, to replace our aging fleet. Uh, we are still utilizing um S U Vs from twenty ten, uh, which actually are not the police package. They were civilian packages uh that were purchased. And they are literally um breaking down. And the, the cost to keep them running is uh overburdening on the city. Um, and we should be replacing our fleet, um, rotating it in uh every. um rotating it in uh every three years. Thank you.
Um, Mr. uh, Mr. Conlon, I, um, you can put that as part of the consent agenda?
Uh, Ms. Vaughn wanted a roll call. Ms. Vaughn, did you still want a roll call?
Yes.
Counsel?
Yes, ma'am. She called for a roll call.
Okay.
Uh, Council President, next we have Resolution twenty-two dash zero three-six, A Resolution Authorizing Contract to Emergency Accessories and Installations to Provide Additional Upfitting, excuse me, to twenty, twenty twenty-two Ford Interceptor Utility Vehicles that will be utilized in day-to-day functions by the Police Department for a period of one year from date of award through the New Jersey State Contract Number T dash zero one zero six seventeen dash fleet dash zero zero seven four eight and amount not to exceed three hundred and twenty-three thousand, three hundred and seven dollars and fifty cents.
Madam President?
Yes, go right ahead.
Uh, I, I, I don't know. I see these numbers are, you know, I understand thirty-five, thirty-some thousand dollars per vehicle, the twenty vehicles. But when we come to the installations of the accessories, it's about, man, almost half of the money as the total, seven hundred and forty-four, eight, two, zero versus three, twenty-three, three oh seven, fifty. That is very, we had, three years ago, I remember, we bought, we authorized uh for the Police Department to buy twice we did that, but the accessories, the part for the accessories was a lot, lot less than this, a lot, lot less, you know? Uh, what type of accessories are we gonna provide? I, is this something new? Uh, that, you know, I don't know, why so expensive, Mr. Wilson? Why so expensive?
Council President?
Yes, Director.
Um, I think the additional expenses is coming through current inflation prices. Uh, also, uh, when, this is for the upfitting of the emergency equipment um to uh transform the hybrid SUVs into a, a police vehicle. Uh, the vehicles have to be stripped down and then basically reassembled with the emergency equipment installed.
I understand that, but that was the same process that I had to do three years ago. And it was, it's about forty percent of the cost per car is gonna go for that extra. And it used to be about ten percent, quarter percent, you know, uh, three years ago. Half costs is so much, you know? Don't tell me they have to be stripped. I, uh, Director Wilson, I know exactly what they have to do. I know. Uh, I know a little bit about radios, installations and stuff. I know exactly what they're gonna do. What my, my point is that this is very excessive. You know, I agree with buying the, the cars, but I believe that this contract should be, uh, should ask these people to get that, lower that, that amount because that is excessive. You know, it used to be like eight thousand dollars per vehicle and now it's about twenty-some thousand dollars per vehicle just to put the accessories on, you know, that is incredible. I don't, I, 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 I don't know, but, you know, I don't know what type of equipment are you gonna install there uh that you need such a technician because, you know, this is done in a, in the car dealers, you know, I know people that do this, you know? And they, that, that doesn't cost that much, you know, that's, that's my-
So, too many stuff is going on, Mr.- Can we roll call it? Yes.
Yes, I, I would like that roll called.
Council President?
Madam President, if I may add-
Uh, Ms. Conlon-
Councilwoman Caldwell Wilson wanted to speak.
Yes, um- Yes, thank you. Um, Director Wilson, what is our, and what is the number of our entire fleet?
Uh, I'll have to get you, uh, get back to you on that, uh, Council Vice President with the exact number.
Yeah, because, um, so, so this, this upfitting to um twenty Ford interceptors, these are not vehicles that we are replacing, or is it?
Yes, this will, these, these vehicles will be replacing our older uh vehicles, which will be decommissioned.
So why are we upfitting them if we're getting new vehicles?
The vehicles that are gonna be outfitted are the new vehicles. And I, I like to add-
By additional upfitting to twenty, two, two thousand and twenty-two Ford interceptor utility vehicles?
Yeah, that-
Are you talking about the new vehicles?
Yes, ma'am.
So this is the addition, this is additional um, um, equipment that has to be installed in the new vehicles?
Yes, it is. And then this is, this is, this isn't, this is a new cost to the city. Um, it's from the uh transitional, transitional money from the state.
Okay, thank you.
And it's a state contract as well.
What transitional money from the state?
Madam President, if I may-
Uh, Council President, uh, Council President, um, I'm sorry.
So I wanted to ask Mr. Wilson, so Mr. Wilson, is this, is this money coming out of the ten million?
No, ma'am. Um, uh, uh, Council President?
Yes.
Uh, no, this, this is, this is not the radio project. This is uh from the monies that the uh City Council accepted uh from the state uh for the twenty new vehicles. And this is those twenty vehicles that was voted on already. And uh, uh, the money is accepted. There's no additional cost to city residents for uh these twenty vehicles or the upfitting. This is already um taken care of financially.
Uh, Council President?
Yeah, so, so I, I just wanted to finish my, uh, question, my line-
Okay, sorry, sorry.
So I, I just wanted to ask, um, uh, last year, uh, I think we, uh, we gave out, we did uh five million dollars in, to, to, uh, to, for these vehicles. Didn't we get five, didn't we uh get five million dollars uh, uh, for these uh vehicles last year? Is this the five million dollars that you're talking about?
Yes, ma'am. This, these vehicles are part of that five million dollars.
All right.
Uh, Council President?
Yes, go right ahead.
So you mean the five million dollars that we got last year for the RTC, see, the, the Real-Time Crime Center?
No, the, the, the five million dollars that we got in transitional aid, remember they, they gave us five million in transitional aid?
Yes. But, okay, but it wasn't five million. How much was it?
It was five million.
No, but not out, the whole five million allocated to the Police Department? No. What amount was allocated for the Police Department to buy new, new cars? It wasn't five million?
Mr. 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 uh Wilson would have to answer that, but I believe it was the five million-
Yeah, I'm asking him. Yeah, in transitional aid, total. I mean, that's all we got. So, um, so what, what portion was that? What allocation was for the police cars?
Council President?
Yes, go right ahead, Mr. Wilson.
Um, one, one point two million.
Okay, one point two, okay. So, um, so, okay. So I just wanted to say one thing, you know, although it's transitional aid or um a funding that we receive uh from the state, but that's still taxpayer dollars. I just want to be clear about that. So when, when, I don't care where we get the money from, whether it's the federal government, CDBG grant money, uh, my fiduciary responsibility is still the same, okay? So state dollars are taxpayer dollars too. So that's all I want to say, just to be clear. We don't get to waste funding from any government agency that funds the city. That's all I have to say, Council President.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak to this resolution?
Council President?
Yes, go right ahead, Mr. Harris. Councilman Harrison.
Our city vehicles need to be replaced. Um, at the end of the day, uh, five million dollar transitional aid, one point two million dollars was used for replacing the vehicles. Um, at the end of the day, we need to replace our vehicles, not only in the police, but other departments. So at the end of the day, we might start, you know, looking about, you know, we just had all this snow. We need to replace plows, you know, we are, we are staffing um in the city. But at the, at the end of the day, these vehicles need to be replaced. So to not take the money and replace vehicles that the men and women who are train, police officers, I mean, I, it doesn't make sense, but thank you very much.
Um, if there's no one else that would like to speak to this, um, uh, this is gonna be roll called?
Yes, ma'am. It was already called for roll call.
All right, thank you, Mr. Conlon. We may continue.
Yes, ma'am. Next, we have Resolution twenty-two dash zero three-seven. This is a resolution authorizing the application and acceptance of grant funds from the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs for Anti-Violeance Out of School Fiscal Year Twenty-One Legislative Grant Application, number twenty-twenty-one dash zero five one six three dash zero four two nine, Youth Anti-Violeance Initiative Restorative Justice Program.
So, 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 so Mr. 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 Conlon?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you, do you, um, can you pull up the, um, the grants that went back this year? That would-
You can't hear you, Councilwoman.
I was asking Mr. um, Mr. Conlon if he could pull up the grants that went back this year. The anti-street uh, uh, grant, um, a couple more grants from the uh Police Department and some other departments. Can you, can you uh pull that up for me, Mr. Conlon?
Yeah, there's a, there's a, there's, there was a couple. Let me, uh, just give me one second and uh, this one was, I believe, for, hold on one second, let me just make sure this is the one.
It's a, it's, it's like several-
Yeah, there, there, I mean, there were a bunch of them. There's, here's one for uh-
Yes.
DEA State Local Task Force Fiscal Year-
Right, so could you, could you, yes, so can you launch that screen for me?
Yeah, this is, this is, this is, and I believe there's one earlier this year as well.
So the, the, the point that I wanted to raise here was that a lot of money, a lot of grants, the cancellation of grant balances went back in the city of Trenton, money that's allocated for uh, for uh, 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 street, uh, the street task, safe streets, uh, for our children, um, it's just, um, child-led programs, we shouldn't be sending money back. We, we're getting the grants, but we're not utilizing the grants. And so I just wanted to, um, this is for twenty twenty, but there's one for twenty twenty-one.
I'm looking for it right now, ma'am.
Council President?
I wanted to bring the most recent one on the stick, on the screen, just to show, um, in case my colleagues did not remember, how many uh dollars were canceled out and re, and sent back?
This is it right here, ma'am.
Where's the, you know, I need to see, um, how much went back. Let me see the line.
Uh, the total amount of the grant sent back was eight hundred and ten thousand, one hundred and eighteen dollars and seventy-two cents. Uh...
If you, if you flip, go back to the line items, please. I wanted to just point something out. Okay, here it, um, strength, uh, strengthening uh awards. Um, I wanted to, uh, to, the, uh, the downtown lighting project. How much of that went back?
Uh, that was a hundred and forty-one thousand, I believe, of, the, the downtown lighting project was eighty-five thousand, eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars. Uh, the total award, yeah, the total award was six hundred and sixty-eight thousand, eighty-five thousand-
And, 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 um, half of our city streets aren't lit, but yet we're still, we're sending money back. Um, go, uh, go up and let us see the rest of the grants that was canceled out. And, and the reason that I wanted to highlight this is just so in, in, in case the public has forgotten and my colleagues has forgotten, we're sending a lot of grant money back. We're not using the grant money uh like we should. We have the safe streets, uh, uh, eighteen thousand dollars went back. Why would, uh, why would any money for safe streets go back? Why wasn't it utilized? And, and the list goes on and on. So eight hundred and ten thousand dollars was returned. That was grant money. We need to utilize this money. We cannot afford for our streets to look like they do, for our community to be in such distress and we're not utilizing the funding that we're getting uh from the state and from the federal-
Council President?
Yes.
I believe the safe streets is uh, this, is uh State Police overtime, uh, along with uh, um, there's some line items about the DEA Task Force. The DEA officer was pulled from there. Uh, that also covered the overtime.
The overtime?
Yeah, um, they, DEA and anybody we send a task force officer to, they uh enter an MOU with the city uh to pay a certain amount of overtime for that, that officer. And when that officer's not there, that, that's uh, the money gets returned.
And so safe, so safe streets, what, what is, what is that program about?
The, uh, the Safe Streets Program was, um, I believe, uh, that was for our task force officers, um, the, the heroin task force that, that is part of that Safe Streets.
And so, um, again, I wanted to highlight that we're not utilizing a lot of the grant money that we're getting. Eight hundred and ten thousand dollars went back to either the federal government or to the state. And we should be utilizing the money, um, as, as, as best as we possibly can.
Um, Council President?
Council, Council President?
Yes, uh, Councilman Harrison, is that you?
Yes.
And I also have, Council President.
Okay, I'm, I'm like, Councilman Harrison and then Council-
We were supposed to be sticking to the resolution. I s, I said we were supposed to be sticking to the resolution, but you were talking about, you went off track on a bunch of other things. But you were supposed to be sticking to, you've said to me many times, stick to the resolution. And we should have been talking about the resolution on the docket, but you're talking about something else.
If you didn't get the correla, the correlation, then I, I, I'm sorry.
Council President, I don't need a correlation. You either realize, you've said it many times that you should stick to the resolution. It's on the docket, right?
Okay, Council President, can I speak to the resolution, please?
Yes.
No, I'm not finished yet.
Okay.
No, we're not going off target. No, off target would be what you guys do tonight. Faragie gave you guys recommendations, you don't listen.
All right.
Uh, if the boss is trying to give you the recommendation, you're not listening.
That's on the table.
At the end of the day, no, no, um, you see, that's the problem here. When everybody else was talking, I didn't cut anybody off, but you guys do it again and you're cutting me off. So at the end of the day, it's, we all know what this is. It's grandstanding. We should have been talking about that resolution, but we're not. We're grandstanding, like usual. We should be worrying about getting things done, but we're not. Hey, you could uh speak now, uh, Council President or whoever else wants to speak.
Uh, Council-
Thank you.
Council President, may I speak on this resolution, please?
Yes, go right ahead.
Okay, so, um, I just, uh, um, Mr. Conlon, can you just, uh, repeat the, the, um, the, the, can you just read back the resolution to me, please? I got distracted.
Yes, ma'am. This is Resolution twenty-two dash zero three-seven. This is a resolution authorizing the application and acceptance of grant funds from the New Jersey- and acceptance of grant funds from the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs for anti-violence out of school fiscal year twenty-twenty-one legislative grant applications, number twenty-two-one dash zero-five-one-six-three, dash zero-four-nine, anti-violence initiative restorative justice program.
Yeah, so, um, uh, out of school, so this, uh, Mister, um, Wilson, is this an after-school, uh, program investment? That's your building, that, that this grant is gonna help build out?
Yes, it is.
So this grant is, is explicit, can you explain explicitly what this grant is earmarked for?
Okay, huh, this grant is a community-based violent, uh, violence reduction initiative. It's a complementary strategy to policing through a public health lens. Uh, also, uh, in employing a relationship-based intervention mentoring and case management model to reduce violence and crime in the city. The core objective is to make Trenton, uh, better through community engagement, uh, and community-focused violence reduction strategies with the understanding that each and every individual who lives, works, and learns and plays in Trenton can contribute.
Okay, 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 okay.
Also.
I wanted you to speak to.
Year two of, uh, of street teams as well. This is what this.
Okay, so what are you, what, what, what are you gonna use it for in Trenton for the youth? Because it's a youth-focused grant, so what programs is it Trenton Police Department is gonna be doing?
Let me answer the question, please, let me answer the question, please. Um, uh, there, there are many youth organizations within the city and they can get funding, uh, through, through this grant, uh, through microgrants to continue their work and build their capacity, um, um, for what they do in the, in the city itself, uh, folks on.
But which groups are those, sir? It's, uh, wh- wh- which groups are those, that you're speaking of?
Uh, you can't, I can't name them because that would, uh, give the appearance of impropriety, but all the youth organizations that we have within the city that are, are willing to bid.
What do you mean you can't name them, what impropriety? If we got money to build out youth programs, which youth programs are gonna be using the money? And what programs are they gonna be deploying? What impropriety is there with that?
The impropriety.
That is something that you could be boasted about. What youth programs are gonna be, we're in a public meeting, you got public funds.
We're going to award it in a fair and open process.
Oh, so you're, okay, so the, the programs are not gonna be facilitated by the, or managed by the police department? You're gonna outsource those, uh, to what organizations, nonprofit organizations?
Yes ma'am.
So, um, and, and therein lies the problem, so hopefully we see some good outcomes from this. I'll be, uh, I'll stay tuned, um, I'll watch who, what, which, um, organizations you're gonna be giving the money to, to, um, to support their programs. I don't even know any youth programs that are in place in the city right now. So, um, so I, I, I'll look forward to seeing, um, how you allocate those funds and who are gonna receive them and the evidentiary outcomes, um, of those, of that money. So, let's see. Uh, uh, so let's roll call this, let's see your plan, Mister Wilson, for the youth in the city, you got some money. I'll come back to the council with a comprehensive plan with all the partners that you plan on, um, divvying up that money to. Thank you, Council President.
One else that would like to speak to this particular resolution? If not, um, um, roll call this Mister Collin and we may continue.
Ma'am, last, uh, but not least of the resolutions is Resolution twenty-two dash zero-three-eight, a resolution authorizing the City Traffic Department to award an award to accept grant twenty-two ATP dash, twenty-two ATP zero-zero-one in the amount of four hundred and thirty-three thousand zero forty-four from the Board of Public Utilities Clean Energy Program.
If no one has any, uh, comments to this, um, it will be, uh, part of the considered agenda.
Yes ma'am.
And Mister Collin, will you continue with the, uh, ordinances, I believe?
Yeah, it's just one order, there's just one ordinance being introduced, uh, tomorrow, ma'am, it's ordinance twenty-two dash zero-four. This is an ordinance to approve amendments to the Central East Rede- Redevelopment Area Plan to include a mixed-use district.
Um.
Uh, the only question I have is, uh, I actually haven't, I have to check the backup again, uh, just if, if HED, uh, I believe this is Mister Daniels. Uh, yeah, this is Mister Daniels, Mister Daniels, if you could just make sure I have a copy of the amendment, uh, to the, uh, approved redevelopment area plan, uh, I greatly appreciate it, because I'm required to file and do certain of those things.
Uh, can, can, can we have copies of that, because that was gonna be my question, there's no back gravity.
Yeah.
I'll make sure you have it tomorrow, Mister Collin.
I appreciate that.
And copies for council.
Yes, please. So, um, my, my whole thing, um, in this twenty-two oh-four is that, um, the council should really hold off with anything with redevelopment until we move forward with our, um, redevelopment ordinance. I, I think it would be, uh, safe to do that, bring Mister Hoffman in and then, um, uh, 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 let us apply, uh, to the local finance board, uh, for the, uh, the executive planner that we're gonna need and move forward in, in building out a redevelopment agency. Um, that would be, um, my suggestion to this council, um, hopefully, um, we can do that. Um, Mister Collin, if that's the last, um, uh, thing on the docket, we're gonna move to public comment?
Yes ma'am, if you could just give me one second to take my notes. Ladies and gentlemen, this is the public portion of the Trenton City Council Meeting. Uh, please limit your comments to the items on the docket or, uh, or as part of the council meeting tonight. I imagine you would also be able to comment, comment on Mister, uh, Wilkerson's presentation for the update to the land development ordinance. Um, the, uh, Trenton City Council would appreciate your discretion and your decorum. Uh, please limit your comments ten minutes, if you go over ten minutes, I will politely remind you that you are, uh, over. I will try to give you a thirty-second warning. Uh, Council President, tonight we have Mister Michael Rinallo.
Go right ahead. March, you have your hand up, um, go right ahead, sir.
Mister Rinallo, you've been recognized, sir.
Can you hear me?
We can now, sir.
Thank you, um, I'd like to comment this evening as a board member of Trenton Animals Rock. Um, Trenton Animals Rock is a five-oh-one C-three nonprofit that provides funding for medical care, training and boarding for injured, abandoned, and abused dogs exclusively, exclusively from the Trenton Animal Shelter. As of September twenty-twenty-one, we have also been contracted by the City of Trenton to provide all animal welfare services at the Trenton Animal Shelter. We are the rescue group that manages all animal welfare services, the volunteer program, adoption and foster program for the Trenton Animal Shelter. Since twenty-eighteen, we have been doing life-saving work for the animals in the city and, among other achievements, have lowered the euthanasia rate from forty-seven percent to four percent. In addition, the work that is being performed includes fundraising of many hundreds of thousands of dollars in support and assistance to the residents of Trenton with regard to food, medical care, training and outreach. This work extends far beyond the costs to the city. In twenty-twenty-one, we achieved over three hundred thirty-one thousand dollars in fundraising. And of that, two hundred and twenty-nine thousand seven hundred was used to provide no-cost medical care for animals that came through the shelter's doors so that they could heal and find homes. Two very recent examples of the services we provide are the Free Rabies Clinic at the shelter that we, that took place on Sunday, January thirtieth. And two weeks prior, we hosted a no-cost pet pantry that provided food for the pets of Trenton residents that might otherwise not have been able to afford it. This is an organization that consistently contributes above and beyond what is required of this partnership and deserves to be continued, perhaps using some of the four million dollars in American Rescue Plan monies that have been set aside for animal control services and I assume shelter improvements as this can be directly tied to COVID-related activities. With the administration's support, this can become a platinum-level nonprofit government partnership and set an example for the state. Thank you very much for your time, I appreciate it, good night.
Mister Collin, will you make your turn?
Yes ma'am, we have a party at three-nine-six-two-zero-five-zero, could you please identify yourself?
Yes, my name is Faith Ann Pearson.
Council President, Miss Faith Ann Pearson?
Good evening, Miss Pearson, uh, Mister Rinallo, um, hand is still up, he can take.
I'll take care of that, I'll take care of that.
And so is yours, Mister Collin.
Yes ma'am.
Go right ahead, Miss, Mrs. Pearson.
Okey-dokey. Uh, number one, I tried going on the website looking for the docket and I couldn't find it. And I am sitting here as you're, uh, reciting the docket, uh, ordinances and it's very hard to keep track. I don't know if you've, uh, changed the, um, the website or whatever, but I would refresh the computer and shut it down and could not get it. And I had to call a friend and at seven o'clock, she still didn't get it. In referencing to ordinance twenty-two dash zero-two-two, the law states that if two or more individuals are requesting a position, that should be brought to the entire council, then vote on a specific individual that they want. The mayor is right in stating that it's the law. Please note that there are now reasons for the others to sue counsel. This action leaves big openings for drastic actions. Thank you.
Council President, Miss Caitlin Fair.
Go right ahead, Miss, uh, Fair.
Good evening, Council, thank you, Council President. Um, I just wanted to, uh, talk about a couple of the ordinances from tonight. Um, the first, I wanted to say to Council President's earlier point, um, regarding the return grants, I agree absolutely that as a distressed city, we are not in any position to be returning money to anyone, um, and that includes to HUD. Um, but if we're not passing resolutions that are authorizing the expenditure of funds, we are going to continually be doing that. Um, and, and frankly, regardless of who anybody has beef with or doesn't like or doesn't agree with, we cannot, this city cannot afford to be letting a single dollar that's being given to it for projects to be taken back. So, I'm really concerned to hear that suggested. Um, we cannot afford that under any circumstances. Um, so I really hope that that does not end up being the case, um, with the HUD money that Farah G. spoke about. Um, we have a lot of projects in the city that need to get done. And if we are in a position to be able to complete bud- budget modifications that will allow us to retain funding that has been given to us to complete those projects, even if that means that we have to rearrange the timing of some of them, that's absolutely something that we need to be doing because we cannot, we are not in a position to be returning money. Um, I also wanted to speak to the, uh, resolution about Trenton Animals Rock. Um, so I, I wanna say that I, I, while I do understand the desire to keep as many services in-house within the city as possible, um, I don't believe that that's always in the best interest for certain particular areas of functioning. Um, and, and quite frankly, is not always a possibility, um, as, uh, the, the new councilwoman, I think, um, I'm sorry, I forget your last name, Sonia, I think it's Jenkins. Um, but as she mentioned, you know, um, we have been in a position to do that in the past. Um, but, you know, when we're not in a position to be able to do that, we do need to continue to find ways to address these issues and ensure that the services are still being provided. Um, I myself have been openly critical of many nonprofits in the city and elsewhere and agree that there are some that are not legitimate or acting fully in the interest of the people that they espouse to serve. Um, I'm someone that's worked in the nonprofit sector for almost my entire career. Um, and I have left some organizations for that exact reason, so I'm keenly aware of that issue. Um, and it's something that I'm, I'm particularly passionate about, in fact. Um, but I will also say that that is not the case with all nonprofits. And I think that it's important that we use our judgment and our discernment to, um, to make judgments about organizations based on their outcomes and their credibility, um, and, and not cast such a wide net on nonprofits. Um, and, you know, I don't, I don't have a lot of information about what Council President spoke about in terms of the PayPal and all of that. Um, but I do agree with her absolutely that it's important, of the utmost importance frankly, that any nonprofit that contracts with the city isn't engaging in legal and proper business practices, um, period. So I do agree with that and, and it is my hope and belief that, that TAR has been able to address any outstanding issues regarding that particular issue, because I do believe that the services they provide are both essential and exemplary um, and far exceed what the city is currently capable of providing, um, alone, uh, without their assistance. Um, I don't know if anyone remembers, but back in twenty-nineteen, there was an animal cruelty case, um, in which over fifty dogs, I think it was something like fifty-two or fifty-three dogs, were rescued by TAR from an abandoned home on East State Street. Um, there was absolutely nowhere to put these dogs, they had no room to put them in the shelter. It was, I mean, this is an insane amount of dogs, right? Um, and many of them, in fact, I think all of them had extremely significant medical issues. Um, there was a dog that had two stomachs, there was one that had an extra row of teeth. Um, almost all of them, if not all of them, had, um, parasites, uh, and a whole host of other issues. Um, many of them required surgery and ongoing medical care for the issues, um, that they had. It's, it, from what I understand, it was kind of like a backyard breeding situation. So many of them were very unwell and they were not being taken care of. Um, many of them were malnourished and, and it was just really, really tragic. Um, but TAR did an incredible job at securing foster and adoptive placements for every single one of those dogs within days. I mean, literally within one or two days, um, as well as raised funds to address their many medical issues, ongoing surgeries and care. They were giving out food to the people who were fostering and adopting them. Um, I actually was really blessed to be able to, uh, foster fail one of those dogs. Um, so my, my boyfriend is, uh, from TAR and I'm extremely grateful to them, even though he does require a lot of care because of his circumstances that he came from. Um, they have been nothing less than supportive. Since I have rescued him back in twenty-nineteen, anytime I need any support or anything, I can reach out to them and they are extremely responsive and wonderful at helping get resources, um, for anyone in need. Um, so I just, I, I haven't spoken about that, um, but I just wanted to give that, that little anecdote, because I think what they do really is unmatched in terms of the service and care that they provide. Um, and I had something else to comment on, um, but I don't know that I quite yet have the words for it. So I think that I may elect to just, um, speak on that at a later time because I don't want to misspeak or, or say something out of turn, so, um, I'll just end my comment there, thank you so much.
Council President, Mrs. Daniel Glito.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Um, I wanted to speak, uh, briefly first to, um, the statement about the PayPal payments, um, and just give council and the public some clarity. Um, prior to us being awarded a contract in September of twenty-twenty-one with the City of Trenton, uh, Trenton Animals Rock had an MOU that was drafted and signed by former Health and Human Services Director Shakira Abdul Ali, which allowed us to be, which allowed Trenton Animals Rock on a volunteer basis to be in the city shelter after hours. It was Tuesdays and Thursdays, five to seven-thirty PM, and Saturdays, I believe it was from eleven AM to two PM. And in order to allow us to do that, they required that we had an officer, um, be stationed to open the door for us, sit in the building and then lock it behind us. Those officers were not in service to us at this time, uh, they did not perform any animal welfare duties. They simply opened a door, sat in a chair and then waited for us to, um, assist with caring for the animals, placing them for adoption, um, doing meets with fosters, um, and, uh, at that time, uh, we, and this is all can be verified via, um, email communications with the city, um, as well as that MOU, I'd be happy to share a copy, that we were to pay them as contractors. pay them as contractors, um, like contracted services, the same way that, um, a police officer would get a security job outside of their, um, normal shift. We paid them via direct debit through PayPal, that was just the means of merchant services. And at the end of the year, our accountant provided them with a ten ninety-nine, just like you would do if you paid anybody, um, outside of a payroll service. Since we obtained a contract with the city, um, and hired employees, they are our employees of Trenton Animals Rock under our EIN number, um, and they're all paid through paychecks. Um, in addition to that, we cover the cost of all workman's compensation, liability insurance and DNO, um, which is directors and office insurance for our board. Um, so hopefully that clears some things up and if it doesn't, we are happy to provide further documentation. Um, what I want to speak to even more importantly is just, um, the value that we add because I think that this is a really important thing that council and the city, uh, and the, and the members of the city, residents of the city are aware of, and I know, and I know that many of them are. I entered that shelter in June of twenty eighteen, so when you talk about what was happening prior to Trenton Animals Rock being involved, I can speak to that. Uh, in June of twenty eighteen, I responded to a Facebook post made by a volunteer at the time who shared an image of a dog with an exposed bone that had been sitting in a kennel for roughly two weeks without medical care due to the fact that there was no, um, funding available to provide services. Um, actually, this is what introduced me to Marge Caldwell Wilson, um, uh, because, um, through a mutual friend, I was able to connect with her and find out the process for being able to pull that animal out of the shelter and get it the medical care it needed, subsequently raising a couple of thousand dollars to get its bone repaired, um, and then find it a loving home. Um, at that point, I started to get more involved as a volunteer and I learned that the practices there were very outdated. Um, they were euthanizing at the time forty-seven percent of all the dogs that entered the facility, many of them with treatable medical conditions, seniors, puppies and other dogs they simply did not have the space to care for. Um, what Trenton Animals Rock has done in this short period of time is really nothing short of a miracle. Um, we, uh, the city had a three hundred dollar cap on any, um, surgeries or medical procedures that could be performed. Um, and what Trenton Animals Rock did just over the last year was spend over two hundred thousand dollars in medical bills, um, for animals both owned and those surrendered or found as strays or found abandoned in the city of Trenton. And all of that money comes from other donations, not from city funding. Um, so when we talk about the cost of care, we really need to consider not only the cost of care, immediate care within the shelter, but how that exceeds outside the shelter, keeping pets safe at home, for example. We send trainers out to many residents' homes to work on mild behavioral issues. We assist them when they can't afford things like spay and neuter. We assist them if they have an old dying dog, um, with euthanasia, if they can't afford the cost of that so that they don't have to go through the really horrifying thing of seeing their animals in pain. Um, we also have, um, helped them with direct rehoming, meaning that they don't have to surrender their pets if their elderly parents are being, um, are moving into a facility that doesn't allow animals. They can contact us and work with us so that we can directly rehome that animal into a foster placement so it never has to step foot in a shelter, which is really no place for any animal. When we came in though, there was no vet of record. In fact, if you want to pull the records back from that time, you could see that the doctor's, um, veterinary contract had expired. In addition to that, the city owed tens of thousands of dollars to several area specialty veterinary hospitals, which we, um, actually have excellent relationships with and as a nonprofit, receive, um, ten and twenty-five percent discounts at the two best hospitals in this area to provide care and extend that care, not only again to animals that are surrendered or abandoned or abused, um, or stray, but also to the owners, um, in the city of Trenton. Um, so these relationships are really important to this community. They really, um, need to continue. We need to grow more of them. We also chip animals for free. Anybody who comes in who would like to get their animals chipped, we pay for that. That is not covered by the city. Um, we provide free collars, leashes, harnesses and educate the public about things like leash laws and making sure that they understand the importance of proper harnessing, um, to, as to not hurt their animals. Um, in addition to that, we've established relationships with TASK right next door and we'll be rolling out a really cool program, if all goes well, in the springtime, um, to work directly with their clients, assisting them with pets, but also doing some therapeutic programming because pets, um, animals and, and human beings have a lot to learn from each other and really can help each other heal. Um, and as you all know, there's a lot of healing that needs to be done. Um, in addition, um, two of our newest employees are Trenton City residents, um, they are on our payroll. Um, they're incredible, um, pet owners and members of the community who are helping us expand our reach into the community. And we are also launching, um, a lot more volunteer programs than ever happened before. We also operate the shelter from nine AM to six PM, seven days a week. That was never done before. So when you're comparing cost of care and cost of running a facility, you have to compare apples to apples. Um, the initial contract, um, sorry, the initial, um, RFP that was put out requested a certain set of services and the secondary RFP that came out after that one expired on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, actually asked for a different set of services, why, which is why the cost, um, increased so much. And again, we have those cost comparisons that we're happy to share. Um, all in all, I just want to say that I absolutely, I, I'm a resident of Ewing, but I absolutely, I'm literally walkable to Trenton. I love that city. Um, I'm very committed to not only the animals, but the people, um, in the city and I really want to do everything that we can to build programming that is going to support not only the animals, but the people that love them and make that shelter a resource. And, um, I have invited in the past council to visit us and many of you have, and I would just, um, ask again, that you come out and visit us and talk with us and see how we work, meet our team, uh, meet our volunteers, um, say hello to the animals and just see the, the changes that have been made in that building that have really turned it into a place of healing rather than a place where half of the animals went to die. Um, thank you so much for allowing me this time, uh, to comment and have a good night.
Council President, Ms. Mary Horn.
Yes, go right ahead, Ms. Horn. Hi, good evening, thank you. Uh, this question is supposed to Dr. Lopez, uh, in reference to the raccoon problem that we have here all over the city. And we've had raccoon problems for years. And the rule has always been that the homeowner, that would be their responsibility. Now, if that rule has changed, then I would like to know, so as I can share it with my other, with the residents here in the city, so that they'll be aware of it because as of, uh, a, a month or so ago, the rule was is that it was the homeowner's responsibility. So if Health and Human Service, uh, uh, agrees to send someone out and take care of the raccoon problem, then we need to know because we've been denied for many years on this subject with raccoons. So Dr. Lopez, um, or Council President, if I may say, uh, if the rule has changed, we would really like to know. And then I can share it with the other residents because there is a big raccoon problem and we're not getting it taken care of. Thank you on that note. And on another note, this is to the Police Director. If, when a comprehensive list is put together for youth programs, I would really like to know so that I could share that also. Being a mentor, citizen in the city of Trenton, uh, it's really needed for the youth. I know that I've been working with youth all my life. So, uh, if we could get that list or a list of the, uh, uh, the four-on-ones that, uh, will be taking care of, uh, uh, the programs, we would really like to know sooner than later because as you know, some are be upon us before we know it. And we would really like to have that list so I can share it with the parents and the youth in the city. Thank you, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Council President, Mindy H.
Pardon me?
Someone named Mindy H. and if you can identify your full name for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Mindy Heckendorf and I'm on the board for Trenton Animal Rocks. I'm the treasurer. And I'm also the CPA that handles the accounting for TAR since the inception. I am, uh, CPA for the last twenty years. I'm well-known in the community and I just want, um, to, um, just put an additional comment with the regards to the PayPal where we, all of our transactions can be verified, can be traced back. We did proper tax reporting on ten ninety-nines. We did proper tax reporting on the nonprofit tax return. We have been compliant with all of our tax filings. We issue financial summaries to the board every single month. Um, and any questions have, um, that come up, we have available information and documentation behind every transaction. We have payroll, um, that we do with a payroll company and, uh, we are compliant with all of our payroll reporting. So I just wanted to put it on the record that the Trenton Animal Rocks does work with a CPA and all of the documentation can be fortified. That's all.
Thank you. Council President, Ms. Sherri Garrett.
Go right ahead, Ms. Garrett.
Thank you, Council President McBride and, um, uh, council members. Um, I just want to go down real quick. Um, the twenty-one thirty-one for the, uh, amendment of the City Trenton's Code article, um, that's ten eleven twelve thirteen, I guess, for, um, the Fire Director and, um, the Deputy Chief. There was some, uh, back and forth with the Fire Director and the black firefighters. And I would, I'm, I'm requesting, um, Council President, if they could just speak on this before you vote on this, this is like the second reading, because the last, the last that I, we, that we heard, the public heard, was the Fire Director never had a chance to look at the amendment or had any input and that the black firefighters did not, you know, weren't really behind this. So I, I would appreciate if we could, the public can hear where they stand with this, um, ordinance before it's passed. Uh, far as twenty-one thirty-three, I'm a little concerned because when I, I, you know, because I, I've been on these councils, in these, part of these council sessions and I recall when, um, I, I don't recall the name, she retired because she was the, uh, Finance Director and the CFO. And she was saying that it would be a while before we would have to increase the cat bank. And my concern is that, you know, every session for the regular council session and the conference, there's an issue on spending, okay? And my concern is if we increase this cat bank, is this going to, uh, uh, continue with the excess of spending? So to what degree do you rein in or, or control, how does the council control this excess of spending? Because to me, it seems like there's going to be continuous bickering between administration and between the council members, you know, especially between a couple of them. And in regards to, you know, uh, preventing the city moving forward, preventing, I mean, we're spending so much money that, and we're not looking at what's going on in overall, in regards to the state, overall, what's going on, on the federal level and inflation and we're not taking, uh, we're not looking at all these moving parts of what's going to affect us if we, it's going, it's going to affect our assets sooner or later. So I think we really need to, uh, get an opinion from, uh, somebody who specialized in where we at, who can actually talk to this, you know, talk to the numbers, uh, than we increasing this twenty-one thirty-three just from emotions and whatever that was been going on, uh, in regards to spending. Congratulations to Sonya Wilkins, uh, Commissioner, I mean, not Commissioner, um, uh, Council, uh, Woman-at-Large, Sonya Wilkins, congratulations. Um, I also have, uh, concerns about, request, okay, uh, twenty-two oh twenty-five, need to revise to read, uh, one year. Okay, that's for me to go back if, if, um, twenty-two oh twenty-seven, um, in regards to the Trenton Animal Rock. Um, I agree, uh, on some of the things that was said, um, especially by, uh, Councilwoman, uh, Wilkins. Um, but again, you know, I hear about all the services and I think I've mentioned this before, so I'm not going to stay on this too, too much, but there is a lot of organizations and I, I'm thankful, all the stuff that Trenton Animal Rock, uh, has shared tonight in regards to the services, it sounds great, it sounds wonderful. But one thing we have to realize is past administrations, I can't speak about this one because I, 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 I don't know, but from my understanding, past administrations have pulled back funding, that's the city. Administration has pulled back funding or cut funding from the animal shelter. So here we are, now we're outsourcing it and now, you know, it's a big price tag on this. And then we're, we're hiring a nonprofit organizations, offering services that are very comforting to animal owners, which sounds great. But again, we have to come up with a plan, okay? Because the spending was, it's spending excessively, but we're cutting back on services, services that are very much needed and we're spending excessively, spending on areas that is not coming back into Trenton and, and Trenton residents are not benefiting. So again...
Ms. Garrett? Yeah, hit your spacebar or something, you must hit your spacebar, I think you muted it, man.
Oh, I'm sorry. Um, I haven't seen this calendar year budget, so I, I'm, I'm wait, waiting for it, waiting to see it. But, um, again, I just ask Trenton Animal Rock if they can please look into, partner with other organizations to cut their costs because I, your, your services sound very impressive, you know, with the Animal Welfare Institute, ASPCA, Animal Welfare Association. Um, CBS also gives free animal shots, so maybe you can, you know, work something out with them to help with the costs. I, you know, I don't know, let me go on. Uh, with, um, twenty-two oh four... Uh, uh, okay, twenty, uh, twenty-two oh thirty-four, oh yes, okay, twenty-two oh thirty-four. I have concerns because when, uh, the city of Trenton bought Carver Center, Carver Center has history, it's been part of the, um, um, historical, um, um, uh, a place for, especially for, um, um, people of color, especially African Americans. I, I understand, I don't know, I don't really understand why you bought it, but I can understand if I paid, I bought it or some, a black organization bought it. I think we should have tried to find, uh, 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 organization, uh, uh, of African American descent, uh, or someone who could invest in Carver Center. Again, the cost to remodel that place, even though it was beautiful inside, it was not a great area after, you know, in the later years, but that's money could go back into the libraries. So that was my concern. I think it was two hundred and some thousand dollars, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars the city bought Carver Wye. I asked the question then, I said, how much is it going to cost to remodel it to make this into a recreation center, which is a beautiful building, I just can't picture it being a recreational center. But again, that's money that could go into, uh, uh, the libraries. And I want to add to that, uh, uh, in regards to cost, there needs to be an action plan or strategic plan for various things that we need happening in the city. In regards to the money in regards, um, money and, um, this being returned for these grants, there, either someone's not, there's poor accounting, there's no actual oversight or we need a, 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 a comprehensive, um, uh, uh, system that we can see where the, where, where money is, this grant money, because some of this money that we've been getting, we could have used Mary Richardson, uh, for parks, uh, ask for money to redo, have parks. So that money for Martin Luther King could have been moved over to the, for, uh, to that three hundred, was it, three, three, three hundred thousand dollars? She could have used that. Like, it's not, people, I, I just don't see, uh, the administration, and I'm not trying to put the administration down, but I just think there is, we don't have up-to-date equipment, at, up-to-date IT. We don't have, we don't, people are not really looking at what our resources are so we know how to apply it because we're excessively spending, we got these grants coming in and we're not utilizing the grants. And as they, as we have said, they're going back to the, 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 uh, agency that awarded it to us. So somehow, things are slipping through the cracks, you know, again, you know, I don't know if people are not familiar, I don't know you've been doing this job, why haven't you put a system in place with these, the stuff? Because we lost a lot of funding because somebody forgot to renew, uh, uh, renew the application, uh, uh, or, or reapply. So it just seems like people are sleeping. I don't know if you're working or what the heck the administration or the prior administrations were doing, but we're sleeping. Replacing the vehicles to, um, uh, the Police Director, uh, I think it's five years, she's supposed to be replacing the police, uh, the, uh, police cars because I think it's useful life of five years. In regards to the, um, twenty-two oh thirty-seven, real quick, I, again, I, I, I asked, uh, uh, City Council, on City Council, a few weeks ago... city council, on city council, a few weeks ago, to Director Steve Wilson, here is an opportunity that you could have put officers in the morning, fifteen minutes, and officers after school, so people are not driving up on the sidewalk, you know, tempers flaring, for you to get to know some of the parents, get to know some of the kids. And your officer only showed up one, the first day, and that was after school. Then he showed up again after I asked about what happened to him, one other time, and that's it. So, you know, we're asking for all this, you know, we get these grants, so if this money is coming in and you're going to use it for whatever purpose, and our kids are not benefiting? And the money that we pass for aisles, for them to have mental health? Why aren't we using this, why aren't we working with aisles? Since we just granted them something far as working with youth violence and whatnot? Why aren't we coming together collectively with this, these little programs that we spinning out, well, this is a grant? But this could have been beneficial to use, instead of us pouring more money out, or using the American Rescue Plan? Because I was under the, under the clear knowledge that the American Rescue Plan was to deal with issues that affected us with COVID. And we're using the American Rescue money for issues, pre-existing issues within the city. So what are we doing here? Like, we're spending a lot of money, but we're using the American Rescue money for a pre-existing issue? What were we using the money, the money we were spending and approving? What was that money being used for? I'd like an accountant, county of that money. Like I said, I think Trenton Administration needs a forensic audit for all past administrations and the
Thirty seconds, ma'am.
That is it, I think, but yeah, we need an action plan, we need a strategic plan. Because we're not planning this stuff out. Same thing with the Board of Education. You, you're spending all this money, but nothing is if it works, you're still spinning out. Because we're too busy contracting for people to make money. So it's really not about making Trenton better, it's about people contracting out to privatize. We're too busy privatizing public entities. And we got, I mean, it's not helping the, the job market within Trenton. Thank you, thank you for letting me speak.
Council President, next Ms. Lydia Thornton.
Go right ahead, Ms. Thornton.
We can't, I can't hear her. Terrible interference.
Okay, I'll just speak, it's my device.
Hello?
Yes, Ms. Thornton?
No, we're
It took Thursday on a different device, thank you.
Council President, next we have Ms. Vanessa Sullivan.
Go right ahead. Ms. Sullivan?
Hello?
Hello? Yes, my name is Vanessa Sullivan, and I wanted to speak, I guess, about myself tonight. And yes, I wanted to comment that, yes, I am poor, and yes, I do live in the projects. And I live in the city of Trenton, and I've lived there my entire life. I had my first job when I was thirteen years old in East Trenton Community Center. I'm currently working as a home health aide, I work two jobs. I'm a single mother. And I would really appreciate if y'all would take my situation, take a closer look at it. And I really want to say thank you to the people of the city that did help and consider my situation. And I would like to say that program is not only for myself, but is for people in my community that are working. Not everybody wants to live in the projects for their life, their whole life, just because I'm poor and people are poor. We should have opportunities. And I would have loved if y'all could have heard more about my situation tonight. You know, I heard a lot, a lot about, you know, the animals and all that stuff, but this, my situation is really for the working poor in America, is literally what I represent. And I wish that y'all already could have considered that. They've been, you know, the first day of Black History Month, that we really need to stand up for our people and stand up for something. And I want to say thank you for even considering my situation and a few words that y'all did have to say. And I hope that we could speak about this more, because this situation that I'm going to bring to the table is not just for myself, but it's for all my community, for people that's out there working right now, struggling, that I'm a home health aide, and I've worked before the pandemic, during the pandemic, and after it. And I'm still putting my life on the line every day, serving my community. So please, on the next meeting, I would like for the other council members to hear about the situation and be involved and really look at the paperwork and see that is literally right there in your face for you to see what a good opportunity it could be for people like me. That we are poor, we are at the bottom. And I am living in the projects right now in Trenton, New Jersey. I live in the gut, Valley Homes, probably the worst neighborhood out there, they shooing people, killing people. Thank God that my son is alive. That's all I have to say, God bless everyone.
Council President, next we have Rich, and if Rich, if you can identify yourself on the record.
Yes, thank you, hope you could hear me okay, my name is Rich Really. I have a few commercial properties in Trenton, because I believe in Trenton. And I am somewhat happy to pay everyone's salary. I have a few questions. A basic question about the redevelopment of Trenton two fifty. I stumbled upon this, a few months ago, I went down to City Hall to try to find some information about it that directly affects my properties. And there was no pamphlet, and there was little information I, I could find. It was busy there, I spoke to Ray Bucci, and I've known him over the years, as I've owned commercial property over the years. I've purchased a Trenton land use book, actually, they had to print it out on a copier, a big, big job. But I've been up and down land use issues, and it's very, very complicated. And it affects, I mean, to revamp this without notice of commercial property owners is, I can't find the word for it. It, it's ridiculous, I can't be the only commercial property owner in Trenton that knows about this. The last docket caught my eye, and I'm also, I'm speaking to you on my phone, and I'm on my laptop as well, I can't find you know, I can't look at that last resolution. But that, that may seem that it could directly affect one of my properties. And it's in the east, in, in the east section. Let's see, Wilbur section.
Yeah, email me tomorrow, sir, I can, I can send you a copy of the order, it's not a problem.
Really, what I'm looking for, I like to sit down with a bunch of maps, with people that can explain to me exactly what is going on. I mean, are, are we, are we basically converting industrial use to mixed use on a wholesale level in the city? Actually, that might benefit me. But the reason I, the big reason I'm, I'm being vocal about it is because it's not, it's not a healthy thing for, for Trenton. The term warehouses into apartments, for one. And I think the, the, the Trenton two fifty website is so ambiguous. I, I know ambiguous, I've, grant applications. It is the most ambiguous website I've pretty much ever seen. And, you know, it, it looks like, I don't know who it's benefiting, put it that way. And I'm, I'm being blunt. And, and, and honest here, because it's really, I, when we talk about land use, land use is very specific. What zones are turning to, what, what additional uses, conditional uses, prohibited uses, and restrictions. And it is very, very complicated. And all I see on the Trenton two fifty website is like, like, everything's going to be better, butterflies, you know, birds flying around, art center. What does that mean? There's, there's no meat and potatoes there for the commercial property owner that runs the city. You took, take a look at the revenue that runs this city. And it's the commercial property owner. You take a look at all the residential expenditures of three hundred and fifty million dollars for school every year? That's not the proper, that's not the commercial, that's not the commercial property owner. The commercial property owner is, we're the ones that just give money. And we need, we, put it this way, I, I'm, I'm in my retirement, pretty much, a couple, two, two, five years. I'm in my retirement. So really, I, I'm losing my skin in the game. But does the city want to attract commercial, industrial business back? You're never going to get it back, really. What you want to do is retain as much as you can. And, and if you, and if the focus is more people, more people, more kids, I love kids, three hundred and fifty million dollars every year. And it's only going up, it's past that point for, for education. So, and Trenton, the city of Trenton, as all cities in the whole, in the country, cannot support themselves financially. They need state, federal funding. There, there, there's stark problems that are that are status quo, that shouldn't be. And commercial, commercial, commercial ratables are the biggest thing you should be attracting and not taxing. I, I'm, I'm being taxed out. I passed up a property, a commercial property, I'm not a developer, I'm a little guy. I'm, but I could be a developer, what's a developer, three properties? I only, I only had, I missed, I, I passed up one because a Realtor told me that there was one, one lot, ended up being two lots with two tax bills. And the other tax bill was two times the other one. So my, my, my taxes were triple what I thought, what I factored in. So I bailed on that, and I bail on a lot of opportunities that otherwise I could be a part of Trenton. Because I used to live in Trenton. I cannot live in Trenton for many reasons, which, thank God, we have Director Wilson to try to fix the quality of life. Quality of life is, is, is paramount, you know, with, 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 with everything that we're talking about, every resolution here. And I think I'm probably catching up on my ten minutes here. But I'd like to, I'd like to I'd like to meet up with a committee. If there is, if there is a liaison that reaches out to commercial property owners, I, I deserve to know what major changes are being made on, that affect me directly. As a property owner, we should be getting a pamphlet. So-and-so, you, you, hello, sir, you live in so-and-so district, and we are re, re-proposing to revamp your, your conditions of existing. Basically, is what the land use is. And commercial, commercial entities in the industry of Trenton, what we used to, what we used to have is either go or no-go. Depending on conditions, restrictions, and taxes. It, it's, it's a crying shame, look, look at Oberon Marsville. That's where the industry is, that's where it went. You know, do you want it or not? I'm, I'm retiring. So, you know, you know, it, it doesn't, you know, half of, half of what I'm saying doesn't matter to me, most of it, really. You know? But this is for you. This is, this is for you, 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 the council, administration. You know, there, there, I, there's, I don't want to talk about the problems you two have. But you, you need to attract. Let us help you. Basically, is what, what we're, we're looking at. And time and time again, we are being pushed out. We, all, all, you have our, you have our address to send information on what, what you're doing. You have our address to send out the tax bill. Send down some information on, if you're going to enhance, if you're, if you're going to, if, if you enhance me, I enhance you. If not, if there's, there's a lot of boarded up commercial property, and you must love it. Some people that are hard on commercial property must love it. A lot of people are, are not disagreeing with me, and I'm not, I don't want to be disrespectful. Thank you very much.
Council President, Mr. Paul Harris.
Yeah, Mr. Mister, Mister Colin, can you get that gentleman's information? Because he is entitled as a commercial owner, he a property owner here in the city, he is entitled to get a clear understanding.
Sure, Mr. Burley, if you, if you wanted the ordinance as well, could you email me tomorrow at clerk@trentonnj.org, C-L-E-R-K, real easy. Uh, Council President, Mr. Paul, thank you, sir. Uh, Council President, Mr. Paul Harris.
Yes, go right ahead.
Yeah, hi, good evening. You know, I, let me just say this first. I don't know, I don't know anyone in Trenton that loves boarded up houses, that's the first thing. Uh, that's not why I came on to speak about tonight. The second thing is, it doesn't make a difference who occupies this seat until the governor of the state of New Jersey and the legislator cares, fully cares, fully invests himself in the town. Listen, we're going to be in the same situation, doesn't make a difference how charismatic a leader you are or how great the council is, if we all work together, if you had seven votes. Listen, until the state, until you examine every parcel, every pilot, and determine exactly what it really should be, and we got our fair share, then I think we'll be in a, talk to me when we're getting the exact amount of money we are owed. And then, and then if we mismanage that, then you can talk to me. But literally, we, you're giving us crumbs and asking us to perform miracles. That's the story of Trenton, and will continue to be the story of Trenton until the folks down the street step up. Seven point five square miles is very small, listen, they could turn this all around. Catherine McBride made very good points about the, the money that came in here between the county and the state, and how literally you could turn this whole city around. I mean, let's just keep that in mind when people are getting on the call and talking about what we're not doing, what we should doing. We could be doing better, but I don't think as much as a failure, a failure of leadership here as it is a question of how courageous the folks are at the state are. Anyway, on another note, I'm here to talk about the cat bank. Ordinance twenty-one dash three-three. What I want to encourage you guys, again, is we need four votes. This is not, this is something you all contributed to, it's an increase in appropriations, we got to pay for. Those appropriations are linked directly to the contract that you signed off on. So all the administration is saying, all we're asking you is, as a union, is to help pay for that. This isn't taxes, taxes are not going up. And you have our CFO, who's been in the business fifty years, no one's asked him any questions, but he can attest to that, to let you know that. Listen, what this is and what this means, we're only asking you to approve what you've already approved, basically, in the form of resolutions. The cat bank twenty-one dash thirty-three should be approved. I did want to say also, congratulations and welcome to Sonya Wilkins. It's good to have a member, a former member of Ask Me on the team here. That's, that's great news, twenty-seven year veteran. And Sonya, she has a lot to say, so we're looking forward to her finding her place and speaking up. The other thing I want to also address is twenty-two dash oh thirty-two, thirty-three, and thirty-four. There are projects that are in the There are projects that are in the works that you've approved, uh, that this money is earmarked for or will be earmarked for. I want to encourage you to strongly consider supporting these resolutions on Thursday for, just for many reasons. But listen, what you hate to do is to vote down this and to give money back to the feds. I mean, listen, we, I mean, we hate to give money back to the feds, give back to anybody. But you have an opportunity here, you got a plan to spend this money. Because here's what's going to happen. Let's say there are ongoing projects that need a million dollars. If you send this money, if you don't give the approval and this money goes back and there's a resolution that comes to you in six months for a recreation project or any project, and it's coming from a funding source that you don't want to use, you own that. You own that because now you had an opportunity to, to pay for some of that with federal dollars. So I do not recommend you send this back. I do not recommend you send this back. And, um, because there are ongoing projects that can be paid for. Because again, why use tax dollars if you don't have to? Why use capital dollars if you don't have to? The feds have given us money, FARA has given you a plan where we can use that money. I think you should embrace it. And the last thing I would say is, it would be a tragedy on Thursday for this council to vote for police vehicles, but to vote to send recreation money back to the feds. I think you can do both because we need both. They need their equipment, but recreation needs theirs as well. It'd be a tragedy to vote for one and to send money back when you know we need vital funding for our programs and activities in the city of Trenton. And, uh, you know, when I speak, I speak passionately about issues that, uh, matter to me, to our members. I live here, I play here, um, and that's where we're at. I look forward to the cap bank and then these housing resolutions passing on Thursday because it's the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Colin.
Council President, I do not see any other hands up. Does anybody else wish to be heard? Do I have a motion to close public portion? A motion by Council President for a private closed public portion, do I have a second?
I, I would like to be heard, please.
Okay, uh, Council President, we have two more people. Although Ms. Garrett already spoke, so she cannot speak again. Um, uh, Council President Kirsten, can you identify yourself on the record? Kirsten, can you identify yourself on the record?
Uh, are you Faith May? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, yeah.
Mr. Colin, we already heard from her.
Uh, is this Faith Ann Pearson?
No, this is Erica Melton.
Okay, Erica Melton, Council President.
Yeah.
Yes. Yes, go right ahead.
Um, I, I'm, I'm an employee over at Trenton Animals Rock. I'm one of the trainers. And I also would like to speak a little bit about, um, you know, what's going on with our organization and not getting our funding. Um, prior to TAR being there, I was in the shelter. I was seeing the way that these poor animals were treated. It was terrible. I was there when the youth of nature rate was almost 50%. And I was watching every Wednesday animals die. And it was very hard being there in that type of environment. There was very little, if any volunteers actually there on a daily basis. There was people there on Sundays to do adoption events. But aside from that, no one was there getting these dogs out. No one was there loving these animals. It was terrible. And the services that are provided by TAR are immeasurable at this point for these animals and for the residents of Trenton. People come to us needing help and we're able to say, yes, we're able to help these people. Whereas before I was turning people away for simple requests like food. People were coming and begging for help and I had to constantly say, we have no way to help you. Now we're able to say, we can, we help them. And if that in itself isn't providing a service to the residents of Trenton, not even mentioning the animals. I don't know what is. Like it, it's, it's been, the change there, even working there, being there is day, night and day. And that's really all I can say is that I just think that what we're providing is, you can't even compare it to the way that it was being run prior because there is no way to compare it. It, it was one cup of food, one time a day. It wasn't, there was no, we gave nothing to these residents other than a vaccination once a year. And I mean, that was, you know, so it's, it's kind of, I feel like the focus is on the animals, but the focus has also been on how we can help these residents and how we can outreach to them and make their lives better and make our city better there. And I hope that that, that the council recognizes that. And that's really all I'd like to say.
Thank you. Kirsten, could you identify yourself on the record?
Mr. Colin, she already spoke.
May I make comments?
Uh, Dan Fatten, Council President.
Yes.
Thank you. So I found myself tonight often agreeing with members of council more than usual. Even if I don't agree with many of the conclusions that seem to be made from the questioning. With regard to the principles for redevelopment during one of the many comments about the several resolutions there. Councilwoman Vaughn talked about putting structures in place for redevelopment, that laws should be followed and that all interests should receive vetting. And I agree. I think those are laudable goals. It sounds reasonable, but the solution that you seem to be offering doesn't seem right. I really disagree with council promoting themselves seemingly and expanding the power of city council for redevelopment. I worry that this is just going to further stifle redevelopment. And frankly, that's an understandable concern based on track record. Just tonight, based on the questions around the LDO, I was kind of worried. At a recent planning board meeting, planning staff stated that the zoning board is in crisis. The board doesn't have the ability to reach quorum apparently. That was news to me, but I believe that possibly, that's possibly because of the inaction of this very council. Don't you have the ability to appoint the members to the zoning board? Tonight's meeting was honestly another example of why I don't think council should be authorized with additional authority. I'm sorry. Councilwoman Wilkins, thank you for being willing to serve. The one comment I heard from you tonight was refreshing. I heard calm, sensible, collegial, and it was efficient. So thank you, welcome. I hope that someday we'll cross paths. I will say that I share the frustration of all the council members here about the lack of construction and progress on so many projects that we've spent years discussing and planning. Yes, it's time for the improvements to materialize in our community and improve lives through better parks and safer streets. I want that too. I think everybody in the city does. But it's going to require council's assistance to move grants resolutions, contracts for the necessary engineering and design specifications. That's how you spend the money. And then you also need council to approve, accepting, maintaining and spending the dollars from the grants. We need to have a perpetual pipeline of projects that are ready for construction. And right now I'm really concerned that we have a lot of projects that are shovel ready or shovel worthy, but not shovel ready. This is potentially a huge issue for all of us during this time of federal funding. I heard a council member react cavalierly about returning grant money again. As a volunteer, as someone that has written grants personally for the city of Trenton, it's a slap in the face. I hated the section of the meeting in which council president shared the list of returned grants. Downtown lighting funds were returned. It's offensive. I agree with you. But it's also time that we thanked the mayor, Mayor Reed and his administration requalified Trenton for the federal funds. We got the city requalified back in December of 2020. That should be recognized. It's a job well done. And Ms. G did a phenomenal job explaining the thoughtful reason for updating grant paperwork with the federal government. Let's please make sure that we actually follow what she laid out. A sensible plan to spend grant dollars that have already been allocated and awarded to Trenton. The youth program with the police, 1.5 million dollars, great. Unlike some council members, I can think of several worthy Trenton organizations doing great work in that space. And I heard it loud and clear that the opportunity needs to be open for all groups. So I hope that the director listens to that. I'm personally ambivalent about the police vehicle issue. I think with reporting, with respect, it's concerning that we don't have the total fleet count number for something like this, Director Wilson. Twenty hybrid vehicles to replace an aging fleet does probably make sense. But I want to flag that just today, the DEP released a funding round for local governments that want to electrify their fleets. Okay, that's March third is the deadline with a priority for EJ communities like Trenton. We would qualify for the funding if council could get it together with, in partnership with the administration. It needs to be a partnership. Federal funds are usable for seven years. These grants are being returned, folks, because council has not been able to operate. It really worries me that so many folks seem to be missing the forest, the trees. The animal shelter, I like that we've improved it and made it more humane space for animals. Thank you to TAR for making that reality. But I don't disagree with council that we need city staff to be hired and managing programs. What's the realistic solution here? I don't know, but it sounded like the ARP funds could be examined. That sounds like a good idea. No, we are not converting industrial uses, all the cities industrial uses to mixed use overall. Trenton two fifty ambiguity, okay, maybe that's somewhat true. There's a lot of material and concepts there. But the LDO provides the specificity. That's the point. Council has this responsibility. The two hundred, the Trenton two fifty plan doesn't specifically mention butterflies and birds, as far as I remember. But it does talk about the importance of art centers. The plan is about the vision. Do we want the industry that relocated to Morrisville? I don't know, not necessarily. The no, no go, the meat and potatoes you're looking for is in the zoning. The zoning hasn't been updated since 2010, more than a decade ago. And years and years before the master plan was adopted by this council. The LDO has been open for comments for months. They presented about it tonight. That's the point. The planning staff can confirm, but I believe a postcard was sent. Uh, I agree with the commenter and almost uniformly every single commenter tonight. We need funding. That means that council have to, has to act when we have the grants and not grandstand. Council's a co-equal branch, but you have to act like it. I agree with Mr. Harris about wanting more boldness and needing the state to truly make it a turnaround here. But we need council too, please. Ms. Sullivan, you moved me to tears. I want to hear about your project and based on your comments this evening, if folks heard you at all, you're going to succeed. And I hope council will listen to you too. The dismissal was disappointing, folks. Thank you for your time.
Council President, I do not see anybody else. Do I have, uh, would you like to continue your motion to end public portion?
Yes, please.
I have a motion by Council President for a private end of public portion. Do I have a second? Uh, we have five eyes. Public portion is closed. Uh, Council President, specific comment?
Yes, yes, I'll start with, um, Councilwoman Wilson, Councilwoman Wilson.
Thank you, yes. Good evening, everybody. I just wanted to talk just a little bit more about the animal shelter and funding. Um, several years ago, predating Mayor Guziora, we had a, I had a meeting with people from the city and from the county and met with the county executive to discuss the possibility of a regional animal shelter. Since the county does not have a county animal shelter, they don't pay any money to the animal shelters. Um, I truly believe that the taxpayers in the city of Trenton pay county taxes and that the county should be making some sort of financial contribution um, to our animal shelter. Because now that it's a no kill, animals are being abandoned, they're not chipped. We can't identify what time they came from, so we have to take care of them. Um, so I would encourage the administration to look at this possibility of putting together another meeting with the county, see if the county can facilitate us with some funding to help with our animal shelters. That's all I have tonight. Thank you, everybody, for attending.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Uh, Councilwoman Harrison?
Um, I'd like to start off, um, letting everybody know, I agree with, um, Mr. Paul Harris about the cap bank. Um, I think it's, it has to be approved in my eyes. Um, also, um, Ms. Sullivan spoke tonight, uh, from her heart. Um, I will be supporting it. I, uh, hear coming from her heart and, um, we should be looking out for the people of this city. And, um, to hear what she was saying, it should touch everybody's heart. Um, at the end of the day, we're supposed to be, this council is supposed to be working for the people. But I'm not sure, because every time we turn around, we seem to be attacking directors, everybody else. Um, people tonight actually said the same thing. We should be working on moving the city forward. Um, and that doesn't seem to be happening. Uh, but at the end of the day, uh, this council should have done the responsibility. I think there was, like I said, there was multiple candidates that applied for the, uh, Mr. Blakely seat. I think we should have vetted all the council, all the people who wanted to apply, but that didn't seem to happen. Um, and at the end of the day, um, I just think that, um, you know, I think, I think the city deserves better. And, um, like Mr. Fenton said, at the end of the day, uh, the people are watching. The people are watching and seeing there's a lot of things that need to be addressed. And, um, whether, um, turning around, giving back grants, which I think is a mistake. I think we should never be doing that. We should be, uh, like I said, Ms. Verge was talking from her heart. Mr. Wilson was talking about vehicles, uh, talking about violence, anti-violence programs for children. It's a lot of things we should be doing what's best for the community. And, um, but like you said, at the end of the day, I think the, the people of the city are going to see it and they're going to realize that there needs to be people, um, that are actually going to be working for their best interest. And, uh, with that said, um, every, I hope everybody has a blessed evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, Councilman, uh, Michelle?
Yes, I just want to say disappointed once again, we're a body of seven and certain individuals pick who they want to pick to put in. It's a shame that all the people put resumes in. Uh, it's a shame over and over that NJ.org, I do not receive that. George Michelle at AOL dot com. It's been that way. So you're sending me information you don't want me to get. But the bottom line is, this is how we treat the people. They take time to put in the resume and other people's make a decision. And it's terrible. When are we going to wake up and start moving the city in the right direction? Thank you. Good night.
Thank you. Um, Councilman Rodriguez?
Well, I have no comments.
Yes, Councilwoman Vaughn?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hello? Yes.
Yes, we can hear you.
I, uh, I want to, uh, talk about, um, my comments about, um, the waste in the city. Um, monies that come millions, millions of dollars for decades and across several administrations. And I sit on this council and I, and we'll talk about the amount of money that came through this administration from this, from the federal government, from the state government. Millions of dollars earmarked for projects and services for the city of Trenton. And where is the money has gone? As fast as the money comes in, it goes out. What happened to the 36 million dollars that was released from the offer funds last year? Where do you out comes from that funding? Council approved. Folks want to come and point out to council, hm. We approved $4 million to fix the Trenton Water Works pipeline, uh, water pipe on Olden Avenue. It hasn't been a shovel in the ground yet. I asked Council President about that. Where's that $4 million? Where did it go? When are they going to start that project? So the individuals who come to this council time and time against the same ones. And I'm not shocked that the gentleman who came talking about, that's the issue I, I addressed about, uh, lack of engagement in the community. Who are you reaching out to? Who did you give the LDO, um, presentation to? Not the right individual. So, so, um, so question administration on that. That's not the council. But I'm going to go back to the, the, the funding, the millions, millions of dollars that come to the city. The mayor, not the council, is responsible for allocating those funds. He's responsible. He's responsible for putting forward the plan to the city. Where's that plan? Not one resident knows it. And he's always friends come to the council and point out the council is not doing this and not doing that. The only thing that the council is the fiduciary of is the approval. We can't approve anything. Every single thing on his docket is introduced by the mayor. He's responsible for the provisioning of the services. He controls the administration, and that's by law. So he has not been effective in delivering services to the city of Trenton. He is supposed to go down to the State House and negotiate with the governor and ensure that the state is adequately funding Trenton. Nothing there, but no one comes out and says that. He's supposed to go, as Ms., uh, uh, Councilwoman Caldwell Wilson pointed out, to the county and deal with the county executive and get funding for our city. He hasn't done that. So when I say we should give the money back, yes. What have we done with the millions and millions of dollars that have come through this city over the years and this administration as well? The councils have approved. That's all we do all day long is just approve what the mayor has put forward, is, that across all of his departments, right? He controls the administration. You got the business administrator here, not one of the individuals who came to the microphone even mentioned the business administrator and the role of that individual. No one has mentioned or won't even hold the, the mayor accountable for his statutory He enforces all the ordinances and the laws of the land. He is, he, he has purview of all contracts that come through the city. They were supposed, all contracts are supposed to be lawfully negotiated. We can't have a relationship with Animal Rock just because we want to, just because it's emotionally or heartfelt. Animal Rock is a private entity, a nonprofit organization, not government. We can only have a shared service agreement with another government. We can have a shared service agreement with the county, we can have a shared service agreeing, agreement with the state, we can have a shared service agreement with the federal government, but we cannot have it with not a private organization, a private entity, or a nonprofit entity. They have to come through the New Jersey contracts law. They have to bid for the work, period. So there's no bias here. So, so be it. I believe in government. The, the services, the departments in this city, they are statutory. They, by law, supposed to provide the services, and they're defined. So I look to Dr. Lopez to manage that animal, the Trenton Animal Shelter and make sure that it's robust enough, that it's enhanced, that employees are hired, the resources are hired, budgeted for. And then if we need anything above, beyond that, then we can go out and contract with an organization like Animal Rock. But Animal Rock should not be running government. They should not be coming to this council telling us what we need to do and what they needs are. No way, no how. They need to go through the fair and open process like all the other contractors. And Dr. Lopez needs to do her job and make sure our department that's funded by the taxpayers of the city is providing the services to the level that the taxpayers expect, period. And, uh, the, the, the funding, the reason we are failing, we have to understand why we are not using that money. So what is the problem? Why aren't projects getting delivered? We can't keep just giving money to, to Director Richardson or to, um, for her to outsource and get no accountability, no outcomes, the police director, et cetera. They come here with no facts. We're still waiting for the outcome of the North Clinton Library. We gave out a 73, a, a, a $750,000 grant to New Jersey Community Capital two years ago. Go over there on North 750, 701 North Clinton Avenue. Go over there and see what type of work has been put forward. Nothing has been, that has come out of that. It was a matching grant, $750,000 plus they get another $750,000. Nothing. Go to 74, 76, 82 Hart Avenue, nothing. Go to Grant Avenue Park, nothing. Go to Better Community Housing, another nonprofit organization that came to council and wanted to be a designated redeVELOper. We, we designated them twice and no outcomes. So I, I, I will challenge the chairman of the planning board. Hold the organizations accountable that the council approves funding for, that get federal funds, that get state funding. Where are the outcomes? That has nothing to do with the council. Where's the $4 million? Hold the various entities of the city, your government accountable, the council for its roles, for its fiduciary responsibilities, for the mayor's fiduciary responsibilities, for the departments, the directors that have received advice and consent. They are the appointed officials. They have a duty to serve the city, and they're all failing at it. Look at the Public Works Department. Look what happened over the weekend, over the snowstorm. So many residents are very unhappy with the service level because that department lacks the resources, the manpower, the equipment, and none of yous came to council to talk about that. But you only want to point the finger to divert the failure of the mayor, to deflect for him when he hasn't done his job. Mr. Harris, Paul Harris came to the council this evening and said, we need the state to pay its fair share. No one talked about that.
One minute, ma'am.
The ma, the mayor needs to, thank you, Mr. Collins, the mayor needs to get, but it's too late. Three and a half years in, and he has not even had a conversation with the governor as to negotiating, uh, contributing their fair share of the tax revenue to the city of Trenton, and no one says anything about that. If you want to point to council, you want to point to the council and blame the council on things that the council has no responsibility for, no purview over. Hold the department heads accountable. They're the project managers. They're the executive of the money. Hold them accountable. Come up and ask smart questions. Talk about things that matter. Talk about, uh, learn, please, educate yourself on what the council, uh, statutory duties are, what the mayor statutory duties are, before you, um, speak about who should be held accountable and responsible for what. But there's no reason for us to continue to, to delve out money in the irresponsible manner if we fail to use it right in the first place. You don't get another opportunity, Faragie. You don't get another opportunity, Mr. Daniels. The mayor can't even keep an executive at the helm of any of the department. It's on constant rotation. How can you come up with a plan or implementation, but you're not, but you never come and say anything about that? You want to talk about the council can't seat anybody on the zoning board, the, the mayor can't seat two people over there on the school board, but you don't say anything about that, Mr. Fenton. The school board has been, uh, uh, without, uh, uh, two members for the longest. So, you know, I want to hear from other folks in the community. Because many, this community's of 90,000 people. So there are other people who have a lot of other opinions and a lot of questions about why the city is not running efficiently and effectively. Why is it that the, the services at City Hall are not being properly provisioned? And it's not the council, the mayor. He's the executive. He controls the administration and the employees that work in those departments, period. Deliver the services to the people. Thank you, Council President.
Oh, thank you. Um, ladies and gentlemen, I would like to thank each and every one of you for coming out this evening, uh, voicing your concerns and your opinions. And I would like to congratulate Ms. Wilkins for, um, her nomination, uh, to the vacant seat this evening. And I would just like to say that we all have a role to play, and if we do our job and if we are committed to actually making a difference, things, uh, can get better in this city. Mr. Harris said, uh, something about, uh, going to the, uh, the, the people down the street aren't giving us address due. No, they're not, but, um, as the councilwoman stated earlier, um, in order for us to get our just due, we have to have someone negotiating for us down the street. I believe that there is a lot of money, millions of dollars. We have allocated millions of dollars, uh, to the playgrounds, to the parks, millions. There's millions of dollars in contracts leaving, uh, this city. And so we have to do our job in pointing out when things are le, when dollars are leaving the city, and we have to do our job pointing out when, uh, the contracts, um, are, should be put out to bid, but they're extended in violation of the local contract laws. These are things that are important because once the administration put those contracts up in front of us, and we know what the law says, and we vote on it anyway, the onus falls on the council. And so when you put a contract up in front of this body that you should have really, uh, took, uh, rebid it, it's a problem for me to even consider it. And I do understand the young, um, the young lady that came on and talked about herself. I'm just saying to the administration, you have programs there that you could have paired this young lady with. If anyone ride down Clinton Avenue and see the condition of the home that they want to place her in for $50,000 and deem her a rede，则ver, they are setting her up to fail. There are too many programs. The East Trent Collaborative, they have, uh, houses. We've, uh, worked with this program. They have housing that they have completed. We need to offer her something that is affordable, that is in her range. We can't keep setting people up to fail. We can't do that when there's programs out here that will benefit her and her family. And so I say to each of you, yes, we all have a role to play, and, and we should do it, and we should do it at, to the best of our ability. I hope that the administration will look at some of the programs that they have and, um, and try to pair this young lady with something that best suits her and her economic status. Again, I would like to thank all of you for coming out this evening.
You forgot Sonia. Council President, you forgot Ms. Wilkins.
No, she has to, no.
She hasn't been sworn in yet, ma'am.
Excuse me, uh, Mr. Collins, I can answer. She has to be sworn in, and, um, we're going to try to get that done tomorrow if Ms. Wilkins have, uh, her own personal Bible that she would like to use. Um, she could call Mr., um, Mr. Collins tomorrow afternoon and go down to the clerk's office and be sworn in. And basically, uh, that's what has to occur with, uh, Ms. Wilkins.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And, um, so thank, I thank each and every one of you again for coming out this evening, all of the directors and the public. Um, Mr. Collins, I would like to make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I have a motion to adjourn by Council President McBride. I have a second.
Second.
I have a second, Ms. Caldwell Wilson. All in favor of adjourn?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing unopposed, we are, we are adjourned at 10:13 PM. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. The next council meeting will be on Thursday, February 3rd, 2022, at 5:30 PM, where we will join and vote on the resolutions tonight. You can come and join us at that time. There'll be a 10-minute open public portion session. Uh, and congratulations to Ms. Wilkins. I'd also like to point out that it's a majority female council with three African-American women. That is outstanding. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Have a good evening.